And we've got Commissioner Carter is on her way. We can go ahead and get started. I know that Commissioner Jacobs is on her way. I will read the public's charge today for our work session. The Board of Commissioners asks its members and citizens to conduct themselves in a respectful, courteous manner, both with the Board and fellow citizens. At any time, should any member of the Board or any citizen fail to observe this public charge, the Chair will ask the offending person to lead the meeting until that individual regains personal control. Should decorum fail to be restored, the Chair will recess the meeting until such time that a genuine commitment to the public charge is observed. At this time, we'll turn off our sales phones, including me. And we use this time, the first thing on the agenda is citizen comments. I only have one citizen that signed up, and that's Eric Lanfray.
All right. Good morning. I knew what to do this time. I came over to the spot. Thank you for listening to my comment. I'm going to be speaking on behalf of Bike Durham. I am, my name's Eric Lanfray, and I'm a Board Member at Bike Durham and also lead our advocacy committee and transit equity campaign. We believe that an excellent transit system that dignifies its riders and attracts users from all income levels has three key elements. It needs to be fast, frequent, reliable, and affordable service that runs all day, every day. It needs to have safe and pleasant connections to and from the transit stops, and there needs to be safe shaded and sheltered conditions at the transit stops themselves. So Bike Durham supports the proposed improvements in these areas in the fiscal year 23 Transit Work Program. And in particular, I want to point out the funding of additional positions needed to deliver capital projects more quickly. There are still projects in the Transit Plan or in the Work Program that have been funded, some going all the way back to 2013, such as the Transit Center or a small Transit Center at Village Shopping Center, which is the second largest bus stop or most-used bus stop outside of Durham Station. And these have not been completed yet, largely because of insufficient staff resources to manage the projects and get them through the design and construction. So we urge you, the Commissioners, to lead collaboratively with your counterparts on City Council to resolve any differences about how to fund these positions and projects. Tax-paying Durham citizens, or residents, I should say, really don't care much about whether that comes from county levy taxes, city levy taxes, or another source to fund these projects and positions. We all just want to see them completed as soon as possible. And so we ask that you do not let disagreements over cost share to continue to result in project delays. Our transit riders deserve better. I will also note that we do not support the county staff position to require cost-sharing for sidewalk projects connected to transit stops. For the foreseeable future, there will be more worthy projects than can be afforded with the Durham Transit Tax, and we understand that. The County NPO and Go Triangle will be deciding on how much should be spent on these access-to-transit projects, but should not be done on a project-by-project basis. Requiring a cost split makes projects more complicated and slows them down. However, and I just have two more points. We do agree that the city must be spending much more on access-to-transit projects beyond what is funded by the Transit Tax, and I know you're going to hear a lot more about that today. Unfortunately, the city has been funding a lot of sidewalk and bicycle infrastructure projects, and Bike Durham has supported them in securing federal grants, including a couple that were submitted recently. And then finally, we agree that accountability and transparency is critical. And we urge that each funded project or service in the Work Program have a clear project charter that defines the project scope, objectives, and budget. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Eric. That is the only citizen that has signed up. So we will move on to our consent agenda, Commissioners, and we'll ask our county manager if she will walk through these with us, and if there are questions, comments from Commissioners, then we'll take those.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Is that better?
We're just trying to get these mics.
Okay. We'll start with 220272, the approval to enter into a contract with contact systems to upgrade two courtrooms' audiovisual equipment in the Justice Center Building using current fiscal year 2122 IS&amp;T AV CIP funds in the amount of $136,073.96. Any questions or concerns? Okay. Next, 220278, Budget Ordinance Amendment Number 22BCC00092, Public Health to Recognize $364,074 from the North Carolina DHHS Division of Public Health Epidemiology Section Communicable Disease Branch to Expand Communicable Disease Surveillance, Detection, Control, and Prevention Activities to Address COVID-19. Any questions or comments? Commissioner Jacobs.
I just had a quick question. Great to see us being able to shift back to other things that the Health Department works on. What do you, are you, do you think we'll be able to hire nurses? That's what this money is for?
Good morning, Madam Vice Chair and other members of the Board. For the most part, I'll be very brief. This funding was something that, can you hear me now?
Okay.
This funding was actually three years in the making. These were just regular CD funds that we were advocating, we being the North Carolina Association of Local Health Directors, were advocating for, for just regular CD program functions to include refugees, TBs, and other communicable disease. So to answer your question, it's non-recurring, so we are advocating for it to become recurring, but we are expected to receive these funds for the next two years. So we could try to get nurses, but at the same time, we want it to be sustainable.
Okay, so you don't, you can use it for whatever you want. It doesn't have to be?
Absolutely. As long as it's CD-related.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Let me just follow up on that with just a quick question, Rod. Are you getting, what's the, any response from the advertising for nurses? Are you getting a little bit, or what's happening with that?
Good morning, Madam Chair. Thank you for that question. It's been tough going, to be completely honest with you. We have partnered with Human Resources. We're now partnering with the library to sponsor a job fair. It's going to be three days within the next few weeks. But to definitively answer your question, it's been tough because we will get candidates, and, you know, we don't move fast enough, they will be gone. So we are getting some traction. For the past three months, we have made some hires, but it's just not coming as quickly as we'd like for it. But we are very hopeful that this job fair will produce some good results. A lot of planning has gone into it, and we are making it available at hours that are conducive to working families, particularly moms who are nurses. We have some Saturdays, we do have some evening opportunities, and Public Health Leadership will be on site to try to attract as many as we can.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you so much, Director Jenkins. We'll move to 220285, Request to Approve Contract with Innovative Interfaces Incorporated for an Integrated Library System in the Amount of $120,000 Using FY23 Operating Funds. Vice Chair Jacobs.
I just had a quick comment. I don't know if anyone's here from the library, but, oh, hey, I just want to compliment whoever wrote and provided all the information because it was really detailed and just really helped to understand the bidding process and everything. I just was really impressed and appreciated all the information. Thank you.
Okay. Next, 220288, Budget Ordinance Amendment Number 22BCC00096, Department of Social Services to Recognize Additional Revenue of $1,105,910 for the Low-Income Energy Assistance Payments Program. Any, yes, Commissioner Long?
Thank you. I just had a quick question for the public's sake. What is the best way for community members to learn about this program, to apply for some of this funding and assistance?
That's a great question. Not sure if anyone from Social Services is here. Okay, here we go.
Hi, Ben.
Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you, Long, for that question. So LEAP is an annual program, and the good thing about LEAP is most of the recipients are automatically eligible, so there's actually no application. However, we do run applications and we do outreach. It starts in December for the elderly population, over 60, I believe, and disabled, and then in January it opens up for everyone else. It does not automatically qualify. We, quite honestly, do not get a lot of applications in that time period, but we do outreach. We do a lot of publicity work at that time. So it's December, January typically is the timeframe that people can apply that do not automatically qualify. But the good part about this program is it's deeming eligibility, so most people are automatically qualified. And the funding this morning that you're voting on, or that we're receiving, is additional funding due to the ARPA pandemic LEAP funds that we had. There was a supplemental payment issued, so actually LEAP households got two payments this year, which was, in these times, you know, that it was an additional, I think it was a $244 payment, and it was a supplemental payment issued. So these funds are helping to fund that payment that was issued.
And is it, it says that it's one time, like they can only apply once?
So it's once a year, yes. For LEAP, for low, I mean, not talking jargon, LEAP is Low-Income Energy Assistance Program, federal program. Yes, it basically opens once a year. Usually, like I said, it usually opens December 1st.
Can the citizen only apply once?
Yes. Yes, it's a one-time benefit.
Okay. Just to clarify, Ben, so people are automatically enrolled in it, and it automatically pays their energy bill, right?
Correct.
It goes directly, so the payment goes directly to Duke Energy?
Correct.
So it doesn't go to the person, it just goes directly and pays their bill?
Correct. It is a direct vendor payment, which is, in the old, old days, it used to go directly to the client, but now it is a direct vendor payment.
Thank you, Ben. I don't see any other hands. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay. 220293, Budget Ordinance Amendment Number 22BCC00093, to Recognize $25,000 in Additional Funding from the North Carolina Department of Public Safety for the Durham Local Reentry Council. Okay. Next, 220302, Service Contract with the Animal Protection Society of Durham Incorporated.
Is there anyone here on this item? Could, just for the public's benefit as well, when you say service contract for Animal Protection Society, can you just kind of explain what that means?
Hi, there's several of us here. I'm Shafanda from the Animal Protection Society of Durham. There's Captain Manning with the Sheriff's Department, and a few members of the Sheriff's Department's Finance. So Durham County contracts with the Animal Protection Society of Durham to manage the Durham County Animal Shelter and care for the animals that come in. It is a joint effort. This contract is written for, I think it was $878,000. APS contributes about $1 million a year towards the care of the animals in Durham County as well. So we provide a number of employees, myself being one, 100% paid by APS, veterinary staff, development staff, volunteer manager, and others. But the contract is for the care and housing and disposition of all the animals that are brought in by Animal Services, the Sheriff's Department. So we do all cruelty holes, all stray, it's the only shelter in Durham. So it's the only licensed animal shelter in Durham, and we take care of all the stray abuse and neglected animals and all animals that are seized by the Sheriff's Department.
So if someone saw this, citizens saw this and thought, well, I thought the sheriff takes care of this, so you're explaining that there are staff?
Absolutely.
Other than the Sheriff's Department?
Yeah, so the Sheriff's Department handles everything that's in the field. So they would be who you would call if there is a sick, injured animal in the community, there is a cruelty situation, a dangerous dog. They do all legal aspects of control, and we do all the care. So all of the animals that they pick up, say, in the middle of the night that are injured or after hours that are injured, when they go to the emergency veterinary hospital, APS takes over custody, and we pay those bills. If they pick up an animal that they're doing an investigation on, and that animal needs care or needs to have an exam, the doctors are provided by the APS of Durham, and we provide evidence in that sort of way. So we do all of the animal care, and they do all of the control. And we work together as a team. Our contract is with the county, but they oversee the contract.
Great.
Yeah, truly a joint operation.
Thank you. Thank you. Commissioner Burns?
I did have, thank you, and when we call y'all up here to clarify for the public, it's just that, it is, y'all ain't got to be nervous. So I did want to throw out there, thank you for pulling that one. I appreciate it, Commissioner, I mean, excuse me, Chair Howison, because I do know that, you know, people ask. I know you're saying 878. Now, 878 is for fiscal year budget 2223, and you all did 2812 this year. I had the only two questions I have, and I'm just, because I'm curious. One, before I go back to budget, I see that your adoption rate is about 49%. So for organizations, I'm looking at the outcome statistics page you all, and I did see that euthanasia is just too high, right? That 49%, is that about average? Because that's about 50/50. Is that what other people or like organizations or Navy organizations see, or is it higher?
Well, we have, our live release rate right now is about 70%. So we have adoption, we have redemption.
Okay.
And so there's different outlets. So Durham has a very unique model. We are one of a few counties that has a contract with the Humane Society to run an open-admission shelter. So, meaning, open admission, we accept every animal that comes in in spite of temperament, adoptability, or health. We also offer free euthanasia to our community because animals shouldn't have to suffer and die. So for organizations that are, say, like the WAKE SPCA? That do not have a county contract, their euthanasia rate would be much lower because they are not accepting animals that cannot be adopted.
Okay. No, that's helpful context.
And for us, so if we're taking in the dangerous animals, also animals for rabies investigations, bites, old and sick animals that are surrendered for the purpose of euthanasia, all of those numbers get factored in to what we touch. So as far as an open-admission facility that takes in all animals, I would say we are not as high as we would like to be, I think, for APS or the Sheriff's Department. But we are dealing with unique challenges in our community, which are some of the things that we're discussing, like a lack of affordable veterinary care, expensive housing, and different things. So right now, our rate is hovering around 70, 75%. We would like to get to 90%, but that takes money, resources, and a lot of support.
Okay. That was good. I did just want to, I can imagine, I was going to a meeting one day, and I saw the Sheriff's Department going by with an eagle, and I already know the eagle's not going to be adopted. I don't know if you, I did, I actually saw when they picked it up, the wing was broken. I said, all right, I don't know where this is going, but it went with y'all. My other question, and this is my last one, the extra $70,000, I'm not nitpicking, I just want to know, what do we think the uptick is and why we need additional costs? Do you think we're going to have more?
I'm going to tell you, that's actually pretty low. I think it's about 4%.
Right.
And it's because we turned in our, we turned in our budget January 15th, but things have actually gone up. So that's just an overall increase in everything, our medical care.
Okay.
Gas, food, it seems like everything has exploded, I mean, when it comes to expenses.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, sir. And we keep getting new residents, new citizens keep moving to Durham.
Absolutely, and the shelter is packed. I would just say, we are, right now, over capacity, so the citizens are taking advantages of the resources that we're offering.
I just had a quick comment. I just wanted to thank you both for, you know, all of the hard work and the teamwork and the partnership between both agencies, and I really appreciate it. And also all the volunteers. There's so many people in our community that volunteer at the shelter, and honestly, we wouldn't function without all the volunteers. And just to commend you on the outcomes, because I see the improvement. And I know we have the NRCIP for a new animal shelter because we desperately need that. I was surprised to look at your inspection form and see there was only one thing noted on there, the metal door. But considering the condition that facility is in, so I just really wanted to thank you all.
Anything else? Thank you both.
Okay. We'll move on to 220307, Approval for Sole Source Exemption for the Purchase of the Hoopla Digital Collection Service in the Amount of $250,000 Using Library Department Operating Funds. Next, 220314, Update to the Environmental Affairs Board City-County Interlocal Agreement. Yes. Vice Chair Jacobs?
Yeah, I actually have a whole lot of questions about this. Is, and I don't know, Commissioner Carter, you're our rep to the EAB, right? I guess I was surprised to see that all 11 appointees, instead of having any type of specified expertise, that all of that would go away. And I don't really understand the thinking behind that. I thought it was going to be a portion of the members because we honestly look to that board for their subject area expertise. I mean, there are a lot of ordinances and things and resolutions that we refer to that board, like with our climate change resolution, the plastic bag ordinance, and, you know, we have many boards and commissions where we do require some, at least for some of the positions. And I noticed, and I totally support adding the youth members, and I support having some of them become at-large, but I'm really concerned about doing away with any type of subject-area expertise. And I also noticed that in the interlocal, it says that the Chair of the Board would make recommendations to our Board based on subject area, areas of subject expertise. And so that seems kind of convoluted to me because then it's actually giving the Chair of that Board a whole lot of authority that should be actually built into the process of our appointments. So I have concerns, and maybe you can give some, or Perry, you're standing here, so maybe you can give some insight into why we would do away with every single subject-area
Sure. Good morning, Commissioners. Obviously, Tobin Freed is not here to fill that question specifically, but I'll do my best. Based on our conversation with Tobin, the issue around the issue area expertise was the fact that, as you stated, Vice Chair Jacobs, it did require some background, some qualification with, let's say, for example, civil engineering or landscape architecture, or some stormwater experience. And what that did was that limited the ability to fill those positions by folks that were ready and willing to fill those positions because they did not meet that certain qualification criteria. Per my understanding is that it is the intent for that Board to still consider issue area expertise and try to fill those positions with that type expertise when available, but based on the fact that they wanted to broaden the potential for filling those positions with more folks in the community to sort of pique that interest, to sort of get the younger folks more engaged, more involved. I think that's what they're trying to accomplish here. I can certainly follow back up with Tobin and the actual Board itself to see if there is, I guess, a more efficient way to accomplish what they're trying to do, but that's the intent of this modification to the agreement.
Well, I would say that I don't think, in the way it's being proposed now, I could not support personally. I would prefer to see, and I understand addressing this issue, I would prefer to see more of a combination where, you know, at least some of the positions, and they could be very broad categories, that, you know, because in, there's, in the documents, it mentions, let me just see, like, I'll go back to, that currently, some of the, some of the areas of expertise are law, water resources, biological science, solid and hazardous waste, energy and transportation, equity, environmental justice, air resources, public health, engineering, public policy, education, and/or communications. I mean, those are a lot of categories. It just, if we could, it just, it seems to me really important that we would have some people that have backgrounds specifically in those areas, and if there's a way to do it that is broad and do some of the positions, that I would be okay with that. But again, we really do look to these boards for their expertise, and so it's about engagement, but it is also, they serve a function, where, that we rely on them as subject matter experts. So I don't, I think it's important to not lose that in the process.
I just had a really quick question, and again, I read it different, and I just, so before I vote on it, I just want some clarification because I didn't read it that way, and maybe you know more about this, know more about this than I do. But I read, like, on page two, it says 12-vote members shall be prescribed roles while the other three-voting members shall be at large. So where you read it as these will be, we'll just pick these folks, I actually read it as they would be prescribed roles, and it would just be three random members. So maybe my reading is wrong, and I can accept that, and if it's the way you say it is, I might be in agreement with you that I can't endorse it either, but it says 12-voting members shall be prescribed. roles. And then it says the three at-large seats can reflect the issues represented. And so maybe that reading, the three at-large seats can, as opposed to may and must, is that where the the nuance is? And then at the bottom, if you, and I'm still on, I'll read number two on page two, right below that chart, where you read off what the city and county folks said, it says, in the event that the pool of applicant representatives of the identified categories is insufficient, insufficient to fill any of the categories, then the city academy appoint individuals who are demonstrated expertise or experience in that category. So when I read it, I thought that's what they were still trying to do. Am I reading it wrong? And if I am, I just want to know, like, where I got it wrong? Yeah, that might be it, friend. That might be it. So maybe that's it. I had no red lines on mine. Uh-huh. So that is, okay, so I'm looking at the twenty-nine, thank you.
You see there are red lines on?
Yeah, she, she's right. She's right. There's one that has a bunch of red lines with the changes I made. So I'm reading the original. Thank you. That's all I needed. And so all that language I just read has been marked out. I'm in agreement.
I'm looking at the original one, too.
Yeah. Yes, there are three.
Yeah, if you look at the red line one, it's the last one.
I see exactly what you're saying, Commissioner Jacobs, now.
So I think this is good feedback, if you all want to.
Commissioner Carter, yeah, she's on the board, so I'd like to hear your response.
Well, I was just going to say, I think Perry did a fantastic job of conveying the sentiments of the EAB. First of all, we do rely on our boards, and I can't think of a board that has more commitment and expertise than the EAB that I serve on, one of our citizen boards. And so I know that their intention is not to dilute that in any way by making the positions at large. This board is also incredibly committed to equity, and I think that that has been difficult to achieve at the level, that the standard that they set for themselves with these, you know, very specific designations for for each of the positions. And so I think their intent is to continue to look for subject matter experts and, but have the flexibility to, you know, be able to take on citizens that are committed and knowledgeable, but may not have the certifications, that kind of thing. And then in addition to add the youth, I personally see both sides of what, you know, the the situation here, as usual. I can almost always see both sides of the situation. I am willing, so very willing, to defer to this board and what they're asking, because of the amount of time and energy and thought they've given this. So I I support this because of that, and because of their goals around equity. But I think that they would be fine hearing the feedback if, you know, the majority of us would like to give them some feedback and have it come back to us. I think either, either approach. I'm I'm prepared to support this now as it is, but I can also understand the concerns, and sure, they'd be happy to provide some additional input and feedback.
So can we, can we pull this one and have, um, Tobin?
Yeah, the staff.
We can come back, with some more refined language.
And process and 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 get us a, have us have a clean copy without all the red lines, um, that have been marked through as well, and and bring it back to us.
Certainly.
Do you have a deadline?
Per my understanding, there is no deadline. We'll be glad to come back if you all either do a more formal update presentation.
Okay.
We can have this dialogue that you guys has raised as issues, or we can certainly just bring it back and clarify via email. But I think we certainly understand what our role is or what you guys expect of us right now. The bottom line is, there needs to be some clarification around how those at-large seats will be filled. As I stated earlier, their intent is to fill those with folks that have issue area expertise. That's the the vocabulary that they're using there. But we'll certainly come back and get them to clarify how they intend on doing that. And so that's not an issue. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Next, we have twenty-two zero three one nine, Budget Ordinance Amendment Number two-two B C C zero 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 nine seven, appropriating forty thousand dollars of general fund, fund balance for ISNT to enter into contract with Next Request and West staff to provide the guidance and implementation support for a new public records solution for Durham County Government. Any questions or comments? Commissioner Jacobs?
I would just love to hear more about how this is going to work. I think it's a great idea, but just especially for our residents to understand how this process will work.
Good morning, Commissioners. I hope everybody had a great weekend. This is a process improvement that we've been working on since before the cyber attack. Our goal is to have a program that's public facing on our website, where citizens can find a single place to make a request for public records. Right now, that is mostly coming in through my office, and my staff is overrun with it. And so we've been talking about a solution for a time. Claudia Hager and Greg Marrow and I, again, have been working on this for some time. Many other local governments have this more automated system, and that's what we're trying to implement.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Thank you, Deborah.
You're very welcome.
Great. Um, next, twenty-two zero three two five, amending the authorized strength of the county attorney's office to establish a new full-time equivalent position. Any questions? Commissioner Jacobs?
Thank you. This is another one that I have some heartburn about, and I, and I have discussed this with the county manager. I know that there is discussion also on our, about hiring another attorney to help with transportation, and I know we need help with our non-discrimination ordinance. I guess I'm just wondering about the timing of of two attorneys, because my understanding is that this position was actually something that we had sought about a while ago, when when Attorney Darby became the acting attorney, and then there was nobody really serving in his position. And we are going to be having some, some changes with Attorney Darby's position coming up, and and as we look for a new county attorney. And so it it seems like the real urgency for this position was was a while ago. And so I I just feel like I would feel more comfortable with us just moving forward with one attorney at this time. And, you know, if we're going to move forward with somebody for transportation and the non-discrimination ordinance, that we would look for that, and then whatever else they might do, and then wait and see what happens when we bring a new attorney on, how they want to organize things. So that, that's just, I'm, you know, I know we needed this position, but it was kind of a while ago, and, and I understand it takes time and not to, you know, I know that it's just taken time for us to get here. But I'm just, with the timing, with this other need for expertise, it, that's, I'm just wondering if we can look at this one and kind of reimagining that, this position to be the transportation and non-discrimination. So anyway, those are, those are my thoughts, and I will welcome hearing from others on it.
I'd like to hear from Attorney Darby and also General Manager Hager. I could hear from, from both of you on this issue.
Sure. Good morning, everyone. This conversation about additional, I like the way one of their budget staff framed it, authorized strength to the legal department, did start some time ago, and it was to address a need of additional legal support in the general government side of their operations. There's been an uptick of a lot of activity and an increase of information requests in this current environment. The workload required for the opioid and the bellwether case has also had an indirect impact in the legal department. And so I get copied on all those emails, and so it's quite a, a volume there as well. It is definitely the board's pleasure to decide timing, but the workload has, will not shift. And I I think that's important. Mr. Darby can speak to that. And again, the non-discrimination ordinance, it starts soon. We're not sure what level of effort will be required. However, we want to make sure that indirectly, we don't task the current staff to a point that it becomes too, too much work. And I think striking that right balance is tricky. But we felt important to still move forward. Mr. Darby?
Good morning, Commissioners. I would say to you that the workload is quite heavy on the general legal side of our office. Public records request takes up a lot of our time. You're talking about enforcing or getting an attorney to oversee the, the non-discrimination ordinance. There's several things in our office that's driving our need for additional attorneys. Of course, it's your call as to when we get those, those people, but the need is definitely there. We were hoping to get at least one other attorney to primarily work in the public records request side. That's definitely needed. You'd be surprised, maybe not you, but the the requests, and then the, the attorney hasn't, having to approve those things before they are released, takes up a lot of time. It's working, me and Paralegal and Kathy's office, tremendously hard to get those requests out. The only, the only fallback we have is that the statute says they must be answered in a reasonable time, and we're really wearing that real thin. But we do need additional attorney, we need a couple of paralegals, I think, with the paralegal has already been approved for the budget for this year. But we do need an additional attorney. My problem has been that I have not had an attorney to do my job, so to speak. And and then I had to pick up what the county attorney was doing. And for example, just sitting in this meeting, the county attorney, that's the county attorney's job, and that's what he, that's what Lowell would always do. While Lowell was here, I would be working on cases. And it's kind of difficult to do this and work on cases as well. So the need is there, and of course, I guess you, you all control the timing, but I would say the sooner the better.
So, um, if the, with the opioids, um, stuff coming, coming upon us, and the bellwether case, and, um, who would be handling those?
We, we have contracted out the bellwether case as far as the, the nitty-gritty legal work is concerned.
But who would handle?
The county attorney still has to oversee that.
Yeah, we'd still have to have an attorney in, in-house to handle that. So is there?
I've been handling that thus far. And that's pretty much staying in contact with the attorneys of record and setting up, helping them set up interviews within the discovery process right now. And there are a lot of departments who have been asked to provide information, just to make sure that that runs smoothly. I've been pretty much in charge of doing that.
Commissioners, Commissioner Carter?
Would this position still be needed if we filled your current position, Willie? You know, right now, you're, you're being two people, in, in effect, you're doing two jobs. But let's say we, we filled the position that you vacated, sort of, in order to take on Lowell's position. Then would there, then would we be okay, that right now, we're sort of short-staffed, because you're doing two jobs?
Right.
But if we were both, you know, am I being clear at all?
E- even if I was able to return back to my normal job, so to speak.
Yes.
We would still need, and you had a county attorney, we would still need someone to work in that public records project coming up.
I see.
We, we could use really two attorneys and justify the, the workload, but we, we're at your mercy right now, and the budget's mercy. So all I ask is that you do the best you can for us.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Well, that, that's helpful for me to hear about the public records issue, because that's something I wasn't aware of. So that's helpful. Thank you, Willie.
Anyone else? It's a wish your pleasure.
Do you want to throw something in? I just, th- this is my two cents, right? I think that Claudia hit it on the head when she says strength. I am in support of us getting a new one, if for no other reason. I think for a long time, Durham plays very small, and we're just not small potatoes. You know, our board of elections is in the news, you know, when we do something good, do something bad. But, you know, there's a reason why forty, fifty, sixty percent of all the biopharma jobs are coming here. We know about the opioid cases, all of them, that we have to, we know about the issues with transportation, like even right now, at Go Triangle, you know, there's just certain legal documents that should exist, that like, don't exist. And I want us to be in a position where, yeah, we don't have a million people like Wake, we don't have a million people like Mecklenburg, but when you come into this space, you, you feel like you are dealing with a juggernaut county that has a million people. And I know that we don't, but we have, we have billion, excuse me, billion, I mean, a million. We have million county problems. We really seriously do. And when I think about all the companies that are coming, the fact that we need lobbyists to be able to aid in fighting for our schools, because a hundred million dollars went to ninety-six or ninety-five counties, and we ain't get a drop of that. As we talk about how we're going to beef up our lobbying, I feel like these attorneys are going to be part of that key. As we talk about what we want to do with the Falls River and being in a position to advocate for our water quality, I just feel like a decent-sized team will be able to attack it from multiple places. And there are days that even when I'm in here, I don't feel like we can do that. And if we're going to be dealing with bigger transportation issues, Lord knows, much bigger development issues, and more companies, and if nothing else, just more people that have social services issues. I, I, I'm just a proponent of us making sure that we have those things. And I feel like over this past year, even with the great resignation, we kind of sort of haven't. So I am in support of this measure. That, that's just my two cents.
So it sounds like we want, we want, the board wants to move forward with this item. We have to have the legal folks in place to make sure that we are, we're doing what's legal and ethical. We've got a lot, as Commissioner Byrne says, we've got a lot coming at us, and we are continuing to grow. And I've never seen so many public records requests coming in, and that, they're not going to stop. They're going to continue to, to grow. So I, I support this as well. Unless there are three Commissioners that don't want to support it, we'll, we'll move on. Okay. Next, twenty-two zero three two six, Budget Ordinance Amendment Number two-two B C C zero zero one zero one, appropriating two hundred twenty-two thousand five hundred dollars of general fund, fund balance, and contract approval for Kate's Corner to provide summer learning camps to support Durham Housing Authority communities and Durham Technical Community College students. Vice Chair Jacobs?
Yes, I, I strongly support this. I just had one request, which was if we could get a budget. I just had one request, which was if we could get a budget for when this is on our agenda. Thank you. But yeah, this is a fantastic program. I'm very proud of. Oh, and also I wanted to, when we update our budget ordinance information, I know, I don't see Keith here, but we do have that list of the ways that the county helps support education in our community. And so I think this needs to be added as well as if the community school, oh, there's David. I'm sorry to see you with a sling on there, David, or whatever.
Thank you.
The support there. But if we could get this include, you know how we have that sidebar that includes the other ways that we support education?
Morning, Commissioner. Yes, on the Durham Public School page, we can make sure to add this.
Okay.
Well, I think this partnership may be with DTCC, but we'll take a look at that and make sure it's noted on the correct page. Thank you.
I actually had the same question. I don't know, I was, no, you answered it. I'm just, one, David, Fight Club on the weekend is not allowed, number one. But, or at least call me, you know. But I did wonder if we could move that, and it is funny that it's on DTCC. And I had two questions around this. One, you know, how, even if it is on DTCC's side, I would still like to see some form of an asterisk because it can be both, right? You know, we can make an investment in agriculture, like the Betsy program, and it be an investment in agriculture and investment in the schools. Like, there's got to be a way that we can communicate that effectively. So I do hope we can do that without people saying, oh, you're counting the dollars twice. So I do hope we can do that. The other question I had, I'm trying to figure out, does this count in our hub spend, or does it count in DTCCs? And if it does, do we have an opportunity to also put an asterisk there? Because this is a women-owned, minority-owned firm, 220, and we've consistently, I think, since the pandemic, and I'm just wondering, do we also count this in our hub spend or does DTCC? So those are my two.
This would count on the county's side of expenditure. However, I need to follow up with purchasing to make sure that they've done all of the certifications to be accounted for aligned with the state. Did I say that right? Okay, yes.
Thank y'all.
And we can definitely put asterisks on both pages. It's a direct impact to both the Durham Public Schools and DTCC, and so we can definitely do that.
All right, we'll move on to 220345, Budget Ordinance Amendment Number 22BCC00099 appropriating $421,650 in general fund, fund balance and authorizing finance to enter into a contract with Miller Three Consulting Incorporated for a disparity study for Durham County's contracting and procurement procedures. Commissioner Burns?
Thank y'all so much for bringing this, but I got questions. Y'all gonna think I'm Commissioner Jacobs by the time I get done. I'm not gonna do it. I ain't gonna do it. I'm not, I don't know, that might scare some people. Somebody got to come see me beforehand, so I'm gonna throw my questions out there, and I'm going to just hopefully get something back before we have to vote on consent agenda on this on regular session night. I hope. So a couple of things, and I'll be quick, as quick as I can be. It says, you know, one of the things that jumped out at me at first was blah, 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 blah. It says, you know, a total of four responses were received. I get that they said that, you know, this one was the most qualified, nobody's question. I read all 84 of those pages, too. So if you all want to try me today, I promise you, I got it over here highlighted. It states right here that Miller Three will be utilizing 10% North Carolina hub, but it also says at the bottom that is a black-owned, is a black American-owned firm and has committed to seeking North Carolina hub certification upon contract. So if I'm not mistaken, can you be, and I'll ask Tammy, but I don't know if you can be a hub certified firm in North Carolina and be out of state. So my question would be, are they trying to plant a tree here? Do they plan on having an office here? And I'm talking about a fly-by-night office where they just, you know, pay to have someplace downtown. So that's my first question. I know you want to answer it, but I want to go to my next one because it feeds right into it. So if we go to page nine, if we go to page nine, it says the MWB documentation for contract payments under the firm name, under Appendix E, for the hub firm that the state requires and that we require, they just have acknowledged, they don't even have it filled in. And so that was a big red flag to me because it says the following is a list of the payments to be made to minority contractors on this project for the above-mentioned period. Now, either they, now they could have filled it out here, so somebody help me. If that's on page nine, then you go down to page 64, and it actually does list some of the firms that they plan on using. And those firms being point management, kaleidoscope, I mean, it's a MWB form anyway, MWEBE firm anyway. So why not fill out the state's MWEBE form as required? Why just put acknowledge in there and leave it blank? So that's the second red flag. The third one, the budget that they're requesting on page 64, it says that it's an amount of $441,750, and it said it's going to use 28% of its total dollars of amount for the contract on minority expenses. So we see what those are, point management, kaleidoscope, Q and A, and that $48,000, $39,000, $79,000, all adds up to $133,000. So I see how they get their 28%. Problem I have is what they're asking for and what we're giving them is like 412, 420. So is that $20,000 that comes off, this is, and so this goes to my last question, if that $20,000 comes off, it could come off somewhere up the, up the stream, but if it comes off here, they're not going to hit that 28% number. So I want to know where that $20,000 is coming from. So those are my four questions. Good luck, welcome to the Hunger Games.
Good morning, Commissioners. Hopefully, I'll try to answer all the questions, but the first question, can you repeat that first question for me?
It'll be quick. So they say that they want to, they endeavor, I think at the bottom, they don't say endeavor, that's my word. So on page 11 of our agenda, they state that they want to become a North Carolina hub certified firm, and you got to be in North Carolina to become a hub certified firm. And I'm not saying that they have to, like, we have outside contractors all the time, but I'm trying to figure out, if they stated that, how do they plan on achieving that? I think that's a fair question.
Okay, as far as I'm aware with certification, it's that any firm that wants to be certified in North Carolina and working, and working on behalf of one of the counties, you know, or any of the local governments here can become certified. And that's as far as I'm aware. And we are, we are working toward getting them certified with the Institute.
Why the Institute as opposed to just calling DOA and the hub office?
Because the Institute is our partnership organization that helps us run the MWEBE program, and that is one of their responsibilities on helping to get firms certified.
Uh huh. Well, if we could expedite, if all that's true, let's not even, I could call today and, you know, call DOA and they'll certify somebody. We don't need to go through a third party. My other question is, again, so we can go down just a little bit, they're a hub firm, why did they, why did they just put acknowledge on page nine? That's just, it's odd to me.
And I will have to look at that because I'm not sure exactly what that refers to. So I will look at that and I can get that back to you, I can get that answered.
Okay.
But it's page nine.
Yes, page nine, so it's after day, I mean, Appendix E, like, I want to, the reason why I'm saying, this needs to work. Like, this will be perfect when it's done. You know, they, I looked in there, they say, you know, the first meeting they want to have, first outreach meeting, they say, you know, they usually do it in person outside the pandemic. I wanted in person, like, I want people to see that we're doing this work, I want folks to see that we're committed to it. Short of there being like a crazy pan, another outbreak, I want to see that type of work. And so my last question was, where did the 20, where did we take 20,000 out? Because their bid was 441. And the, yeah, the bid is 441, and now we gave them 421. I just want to make sure that 20,000 doesn't come out of this list of hub spend that we have on page 64, because then that would get them under our goal.
The reduction came by way of, they already working with the city of Raleigh.
Right.
On their disparity study.
For the research document.
And some of the things that they work with, you know, on that disparity study, they'll be able to use some of that toward our contract.
Right, so that's some of the research.
Yeah, they call it a quorum.
I did call some Raleigh City Council folks, and I'll be following up with them. I got some good answers, I got some not-so-great answers. And so last but not least, that hub certification, they can be certified here in North Carolina, but they also must be hub certified in their own state. So I just want to make sure that we get all of that cleared up before we move any of this.
Okay, I can definitely get that back to you.
Thank you. And again, great work, great work to everybody. I know it was a team of folks, I know that y'all got a bunch of bids, I know that a lot of people are interested in these dollars. What makes me happiest about this, I'll be honest, I like the fact that they have, it looks odd that you had to defend your work a lot, but that's how racism works. But what made me very happy was they did go in the court so many times, right? And since 1997, none of their rulings have been overturned. So that's 25 years where nobody has kind of sort of, they've questioned their work, but they've not been able to tear down their work. So I am happy about that, and I look forward to them being able to do the same thing. I didn't see any of that work in the Fourth Circuit. I'll go back because that's where we are. So those are, y'all smiling because y'all like, God, Commissioner Burns really read all 84 pages. I did. So I just, I want to make sure that this goes well, and I did want attorneys leading this because that's where implementation is important. So again, thank you to everybody who was on that team if we can get some answers to those questions. And to be, I'm not nitpicky, these questions I have, they're coffee stains on an airplane. A coffee stain on the armchair of an airplane does not mean the plane can't fly. When you come to the plane and you see coffee stains, you know, it's a dirty plane, has nothing to do with whether or not the plane can fly. So I get that, but I still don't like the coffee stain. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Any other questions? Commissioner Jacobs?
Well, I appreciate Commissioner, I know that this is near and dear to your heart, and this is a huge priority for Commissioner Burns, and that you have a lot of expertise in this area. I just, I just wanted to in general say that I was, I'm excited that we're doing this because we are, it's time for us to do this, and I'm glad that we're picking a different firm. I know there was some comment in the, and I appreciated seeing the evaluation checklist that you all used, what were the different criteria that you looked at, but there was a comment about how this firm would hopefully give a fresh perspective because we've used the same company the previous two studies. And my level, my knowledge is very limited, so I also looked at the 84 pages. And I was just really impressed at the process that they looked like they were going to be using, all the different approaches and study analysis that they're going to go through because this is really difficult stuff. This is about like culture, right? And how people actually just do their work every day and the decisions that individual people make, and it's really, really challenging stuff, so. And I don't know, County Manager, if you had any comments about it, but so I'm excited and I'm glad that we have somebody who's going to make sure that we, we're doing this the best that we can. Thank you.
So Commissioner Jacobs, I'm going to go to the County Manager in a minute. I just want to say to Ms. Perry that thank you so much. One of the questions I want to ask is your department. I know years ago, when your department only had maybe one or two people working, and so I've been here long enough to see that kind of evolve. So my question is, I know how this work has always been important to Durham County and to you, and what I'd like to know is, are you sufficiently staffed to do the kind of work that needs to get done around this? Because it is very important to all of us on this board, and it's important to this community. So that's my question.
And the answer is no.
Okay, that's right. That's what we need to know.
Yeah. For years, we had, we had a half a body.
Yeah, I remember.
Doing, yeah, doing this work, and then back in 2016, you all authorized two positions for us, two full-time positions, and that's what we have now, two full-time positions. But one of those positions is being pulled in different directions. And as you know, procurement, we wear so many different hats. It's, it's really a challenge to keep up this work and to do it the way that we really want to do it without having, you know, sufficient staff.
Well, with our racial equity commission and all the other things that we are bringing on board that is accounted, as the Board of Commissioners is signing on, that might be something that we'll ask our manager to inquire with you to find out, what does this board need to undertake to ensure that what we say we support and what we say we want, that you have the staff to get it done?
Yes, we definitely appreciate that.
So I know that our County Manager is very committed to this area and has worked in this arena, so I'd like to see if you have anything to say on this one.
I will just add that I'm about to jump out of my seat at this conversation, okay? Yes, thank you. We just had this conversation last week, and I expressed to the staff that we really need some more dedicated staff people to do this work. I applaud the work that they've done, but when you have divided responsibilities, we really don't honor this work the way that we should. And so we have had a lot of robust discussion around this area, so I appreciate the questions you all asked. This was actually, they were planning to bring this probably the first month that I got here. And so Commissioner Burns, they were ready for all of your interrogation because they had it first with me and General Manager Hager, and so they were able to go back and really refine this so that you all could see and follow all of the great work that they put into it. So I really applaud the staff for the manner in which you went back and laid it all out for us so that it was something that you could, was palatable and you could understand and follow. But yes, that, thank you so much for your words of support and encouragement. We really do need to beef up the work around our hub and minority participation.
So we'll look forward to hearing back from you.
Yes.
Okay, thank you so much. Unless there are any other questions? I don't see any.
And Madam Chair, that concludes the consent agenda items.
Okay, thank you, Manager. Now we're into our discussion items. The first one, 220323, amending the authorized strength of the County Administration Department to establish a new full-time equipment position and create an on-the-bus office. And I think that one is, who's that, Claudia?
Uh huh. And we also have some representatives from our consulting firm that have helped with some of the work around this.
Okay. So this is General Manager Claudia Hager, and who else we got here?
Good morning. This item is one that we've talked about for some time as well, started back, I guess, in the fall. And we have with us today two of the consultants that have been helping us on this project. And the Need for an UMS Buzz came up out of a need to try to have a different process in how our community and our employees communicate and get issues evaluated and resolved. An UMS Buzz office, infrastructure, is one that is used often in the private sector. Universities use them. In some local governments, you see them, you don't see them quite as much, but they make a big difference on how issues are resolved and the feeling. and the feeling that's needed for the individual that may have a concern. When one, especially an employee, has a grievance, often they may start with the department head, and then they'll go see the HR director, then they'll send a note to the General Manager, and then the deputy or whomever, and it goes into this circle, and they get often frustrated. So our desire for some structure and looking at that led to this approach. We have with us two of the consultants that helped us with this. It's Ms. Tiffany Sneed and Matthew Sullivan. Both are attorneys, mediators, experts. They worked on the OMS Buzz establishment at the town of Chapel Hill as well. And I have just learned so much from them. And I think we're fortunate to be next door to a community that has started this some time ago as well. Our County Manager also has much experience in this as well. She was the first OMS Buzz at North Carolina's A&amp;T University. So we have quite the resource in her as well. I will not take long. We'll go through the highlights of the presentation and then allow for general questions. We did have some exchanges some time ago. It was probably about six months ago. There've been so many opportunities here. And so this is one that the loop is just now getting closed. We'll not read all of this, but the OMS Buzz program will provide a vehicle for residents as well as employees to have a structure for conflict resolution within Durham County government. The goal of the program is to be inclusive and accessible for all possible types of issues that may come up and to be a place that anyone can feel that their issues can be vetted in confidence. The program is one that is independent, impartial, and confidential, which is most important. And it will allow for a path for, that integrates with all of the other places that I talked about. When folks have conflicts, they may reach out to HR. They may reach out to the internal auditor or to a general manager. This office will help in the coordination so that there is a seamless process and that the advocacy is done in a way that is helpful. The program will be implemented in two phases. The first phase will focus on employees. With the second phase, looking at how do we do this outreach with the community? It will be voluntary in that if, when we talk about no cost to the visitor, that's mainly focused on if a resident comes in because we do have some residents that do get frustrated with us at times. And so we want their experience for resolution to also be seamless as well. The program, and I mentioned this earlier, supplements but does not replace any existing formal processes or channels that function in the government. Given an example of a couple of them, one is in the town of Chapel Hill. One is in Orange County, Florida. I must have wanted to make sure there was some type of Orange County designation with it. As I mentioned earlier, most universities have them. Often in the private sector, you will see this structure as well. The program will fall under the umbrella of the International Code of Ethics for the OMS Buzz Persons Association. There's a code of ethics and the standards of practice. Those are also included in the Legistar information. In order for the program to have the most significant impact within the organization community, it will have a structure functioning appearance to make sure that the activities are carried out in a very fair way and formality. It provides a safe and welcoming space for individuals to discuss issues of concerns. I know, again, all of us, including commissioners, when I was listing out all of the places that folks may go to when they have a concern, I should have put commissioners up there first. My apologies for leaving that off as the first place. And so we recognize that component as well. The office can identify resources and direct individuals to appropriate channels for issues or claims to be heard. Sometimes it may mean that it's an internal process. Sometimes we may have to get an external individual to help mediate or that particular issue. Again, confidentiality is another paramount component of this. Communications, conversations, all of those are confidential. The person in position will serve as a designated neutral and impartial dispute resolution practitioner whose function is to provide confidential and informal assistance to county employees. And as I mentioned earlier, we're looking at two different phases. Phase one for county employees, and second, phasing it out to the residents as a component. And I believe this was the approach that the town of Chapel Hill also took. And if the board chooses to move forward with this, we would look at a search firm to help us identify the individual that would run this and establish locations for confidential meetings that would be within our existing space or other places, and look at, giving the board an update in the October board meeting. Again, this is the first chance we formally discussed this as a group. We've had some exchanges, but I would like for the board to ask questions and also ask Matt and Tiffany if they have any comments they'd like to share as well. Because I did move pretty quickly. They are the experts. And I know the OMS Buzz program has made a tremendous difference with the town of Chapel Hill.
Green means go, as my son would say. Good morning, how are you doing? Happy to offer anything that we can. I don't want to take up the time that you may have for questions. I will say that we have found in the town, and actually the university was very integral, and we got started as well, University of Chapel Hill, that we have found in the town that it has been imperative for our employees to have just a space where they can go, that's safe, where they can have a sounding board, that's not HR, that's not their chain of command, their supervisors or what have you. And while you want people to be able to go to those established channels, you want them to be able to reach out to you if necessary. There's also value in having some pressure, if you will, taking off of those other channels. And sometimes employees can actually hear better from an impartial party, someone who's not invested, someone who doesn't have history with them. They can say the same thing that supervisor says or the same thing that HR has said, but they receive it differently because of the relationship. And I think one of the things that has helped the success of our program or two characteristics of it, and it's the confidentiality piece, the independence. Knowing that when I go to this person or persons, I'm not going to have to hear about it in an evaluation. I'm not going to have it used against me as a part of retaliation or concerns regarding that. I'm not going to hear about it around the water cooler. It is a space where I can unload and share what's going on with me, and someone can help me see what I don't see, hear what I'm not hearing, and help me navigate some of the path forward that honestly, especially if you're in the midst of something that's going on with you personally or at work, it's hard to navigate those systems that are in place, no matter how good they are. That and understanding that this person does not report to HR, this person does not necessarily report to the manager's office. They are independent. They're not keeping records on them. They're not using something that might be used against them later. It is an independent office that provides the support that employees and community members may need to voice concerns. And then having that person understand the importance of communication and that it's not a dumping ground where things go in or lost and never come up again. If there are truly issues that are going on systemically or in the organization that can be approved upon, that need to be training issues addressed or things that just you would not otherwise be made aware of but for this employee having the courage to come forth. You want someone in the position, what will communicate on a regular basis to the manager's office, to HR if needed, and can provide some input and feedback that can help them address issues of concern before they come up. So it's an invaluable tool, we have found. And I think every organization, if they are able to, could benefit from having it as an asset in the community.
And I just, good morning. One, just one add. What a great opportunity that your current manager has experienced in working with OMS Buzz. And I think the synergy there with appropriate personnel in the OMS Buzz office working with a manager who has intimate OMS Buzz experience is a great opportunity. I'll also say, what we know is that over the last COVID years particularly, our employees are incredibly stressed. We've talked some to Kathy about what she struggles with in trying to support employees. And this will provide yet another tool that employees can use and the community. One concern I'd have is, and that's why we have proposed a two-phase process, is I'm afraid a single OMS Buzz could get really overwhelmed if encountering all employees and county members all at the same time. So probably important to sort of stage this appropriately to make sure that the OMS Buzz doesn't themselves become fully overwhelmed.
Okay, thank you for your presentation. So Commissioners, it's back to the board for your questions and your concerns. We'll start with Commissioner Carter.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thanks to Claudia for your leadership around this and for your consultants' guidance and expertise and just presenting to us today, helping me to understand sort of the differences between the OMS Buzz office and our current HR policies and opportunities, channels. You mentioned different channels for taking complaints and grievances. Like in practice, how would it work if an employee has a grievance against someone in their chain of command? Would it be better for them to just follow the grievance policy or go through the OMS Buzz office, or would they do both? Or how does that play out in reality?
So in reality, sometimes employees are either unclear or uncomfortable necessarily following what's in place. So a great OMS Buzz, and Dr. Sol has to speak to this, I'm sure, will say, if this is really an appropriate thing to deal with through the grievance process, they will redirect them to the grievance process and help them to follow that established protocol. If they're unsure about what that looks like, next steps, again, that's something they can help them walk through, but it will not supplant that process that's already in place for a good reason. It will just help them how to navigate that. Is that helpful?
It's really a support.
Exactly, exactly.
Ways to follow the HR policies that we have.
They would not be able to go there and circumvent processes that are already in place.
I see, okay. And the one concern I sort of maybe have with it, maybe not, is it makes a lot of sense to me that this needs to feel independent of county government. If the OMS Buzz reports to the county manager, it doesn't feel independent to me. Help me feel more comfortable with that, or help me understand how that really is independent.
So, and again, it's not a reporting structure, it's communication.
Communication.
So they would provide, for instance, in our situation, our OMS Buzz provides quarterly reports to the manager. They have a meeting and talk about trends that they've been seeing, aggregate information about types of complaints they may have been receiving, but it's really just open lines of communication. It's not a place where the county's on notice of things that have occurred. It's not a place where the manager is providing, say, evaluations or supervision. The manager's office and the OMS Buzz office would work together to establish maybe what the protocols would look like, but it would be a clear, independent structure, separate and apart. But it really only works and is effective if they're communicating openly with the manager's office. Because otherwise, you're sitting on a potential volcano that's ready to erupt, and you have no idea until it actually erupts. That's not the type of independence that you want. You want independence with communication and relationship.
That sounds good. And there's not been any issue around this independence element in the town of Chapel?
No, absolutely not. No, what we have found, and this will be important as you move forward with this program, is that messaging and education with the employees and the community eventually will be the most important. Sometimes employees go to the OMS Buzz office and they expect some kind of feedback to come out. I took this concern to you about what was going on in my department, what was going on with my supervisor, and I never heard anything about it. That actually means it's working. You shouldn't hear anything about it, right? Unless something was really dire and some severe disciplinary action had to be taken and it was visible, you shouldn't know anything that occurred. So helping them to understand the purpose and function of that position early on and consistently will be important to the success of the program.
Okay, great. And this OMS Buzz is being proposed in such a way that this office would not have responsibility for investigating complaints?
Absolutely not.
Sometimes they do. It seemed like in Orange County, maybe they did.
So, and some organizations, they do, but when you go down that road, you open up the door for your confidentiality to be intruded upon.
Yeah, that seemed tricky to.
Exactly. It's kind of hard to investigate if you don't have a file. It's kind of hard to have a file if you don't have documents, so, yeah. That's a HR function or an external function. You don't want that in your OMS Buzz.
Let's pull that mic up a little bit more, please.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is that better? Yeah, I want to follow up on Heidi. Because I'm not clear either of the lines of communication. So if I'm an employee and I have a complaint, do I just totally not have a conversation with my manager?
Not at all. We encourage, and I would hope, that you would go to your manager first. But say you're not comfortable going to your manager yet, or say you need someone to help you sound out what that conversation looks like. An OMS Buzz might be a good place for you to go. Not to discourage. And the reality is, it's going to happen. It is going to happen. And sometimes if there's not an OMS Buzz in place, the employee just sits. They don't necessarily go to HR, or they go to HR, they get guidance from HR, and they don't like what HR said. Or they have followed what HR has said, and they're still experiencing some issues or concerns. This is a space where they can go and still sound those things out.
So is Chapel Hill the only government entity that you've seen this work? You've mentioned higher education a couple of times that you've seen it work in higher education, but have you seen it work in government before, other than with Chapel Hill?
I only gave two examples. There are several other entities or jurisdictions that have OMS Buzz. It's just not a concept that you see as often in local governments. And Chapel Hill is one that's here, and I know, I'm not familiar with others in North Carolina, but I'll let Matt and Tiffany.
I can't rattle any off the top of my head right now. I'm sorry. I can't rattle any off the top of my head right now, but I don't think we're an anomaly.
No. And we actually started ours as an experiment. It was not intended initially as, we didn't launch to say it was permanent. We started as an experiment to see how it worked. And then when it started working, it became a non-question of whether or not we continued the program.
And I know we've talked about this before, but it's just trying to, I'm trying to connect the dots here and struggling with that one. But let's, Commissioner Alom had her hand up.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Jim, Claudia, and all of you guys for this presentation. And my question was kind of piggybacking off of Commissioner Carter's as well. When we're talking about the, you know, I was also concerned with if it's reporting to the managers. So thank you for clarifying that. It would be helpful if like, there was like an org chart-type graphic to help clarify that, to show that it's not falling under the manager's office, but kind of parallel or perpendicular to that. I think that would also help like ease concerns like with employees if they have that. I would also love to see with the Chapel Hill program, if you have examples of practices that they if you have examples of practices that they've put into place after like the success that they've gotten feedback from the program, or organizational changes that they've brought forward from having an Ombud's program.
So this is an example of how well the program works, because I should know, right? It's confidential. And I don't, I'll say that somewhat tongue-in-cheek, but if the information goes into the Ombud's Office, and there is a need, a trend, a recommendation that is advanced and is communicated to the manager's office, the only people really that would know are the people that went to the Ombud's Office and raised that concern or raised that issue. I can tell you, we have got a situation that's going on right now where a group of employees from a particular department did separately and frequently go to the Ombud's Office to have some issues addressed. And out of that, there were some listening sessions that came forth and some things that have been put into place to address those concerns. So that's been more of a visible one, because again, they were very vocal about where they went and talked. That's not something the Ombud's Office would have offered, but some employees are very open about who they've talked to. And so we know that that was some of the things that came in place. But typically, if it works really well, the information goes in, it's communicated out as needed, to whom it's needed to. Sometimes that may mean picking up the phone and talking to a department's head and saying, "I'm seeing concerns aggregately about XYZ." They don't know where it's coming from, they don't know what's going on, but they can provide information so that they can take the steps necessary to address concerns going on in the department. But ideally, the information goes out, and then if there's a need for action, then the Ombud's, again, which is why it's important to have the right person, the Ombud's initiates who that communication should go to. Is that helpful? Thank you.
I think, I think it's also an issue of trust and trust-building between the Ombud's, the manager, and the HR director, quite frankly, in that they have to have a certain level of trust among each other that information, when needed, is shared in the appropriate ways to help the organization. And it doesn't, and part of the issue with the Ombud's is it's, there is, it's hard to put it in a can and have a plan because of the fluidity of the communication and trying to exact out outcomes. You can look at numbers, but as far as a process, it's going to depend on the individual and their situation.
So I hear a dotted line between personnel and the manager and the Ombud's.
Yes, ma'am.
And I also saw that, starting out with one person working with employees, and later having that person work with the community. And what I saw there was that it would have to be more than one person.
Yes, ma'am.
We've had two, and we're down to one right now. Ideally, we'll get back up to two. Unfortunately, one of our Ombud's just passed away. But ideally, it works with two. Okay, Commissioners? Commissioner Jacobs? Commissioner Burns, I'm not sure which one, both of you raised hands at the same time, so either one.
I'll go, kind of sort of peel off one. Thank you all for coming, thank you for your expertise. Thank you, GM Hager, for bringing this to us. You know, anything that makes people, makes our employees feel more comfortable, makes the county feel more comfortable, especially as we're trying to always build and maintain trust, I'm a proponent of. I did want to ask though, because I have worked in offices with Ombudsman, right? It's really different when it's a office. Like when I was at the Department of Justice, we had one. I know that like UNC has, they have like an association. I remember I presented there before. I'm trying to think how it will work here, because with this person, are we going to have individuals who will be in a specific area? Or would this person be a generalist? And just follow my logic here. I imagine that when we open it up to the public, we'll have somebody who might say, "Well, I wanted to get Memorial Stadium." And that Ombud's person, he doesn't have to be an expert, but they might have to go to Mo and say, "You know, what's the process for this?" Or let's say they didn't like, you know, when they went and applied for our low-income energy program, something we had today, so now we got to go and call Ben. I will just say, for a county like ours, when I look at Mecklenburg and Wake, our suite of services beats them every day of the week, because we have so many programs, it's so robust, we have so many things that touch the community and are forward-facing. And I'm trying to figure out like, adding one person, like, how do we make sure that that person's trained well? How do we get everything? So those are just some of, they're not concerns or criticisms, I just want the person to be successful. And just maybe somebody can comment on that and help me out a little bit.
So it is not uncommon for our Ombud's to pick up the phone after talking to someone to educate themselves about the very thing that someone came in the office. It's part of the position, it's part of the expectation. So you're exactly right, that would probably happen more often than not. And why? We again encourage people, encourage the program to be phased in, because employees are probably going to be excited initially, and that one person may be inundated.
Yes.
Right. So you don't want them inundated internally and externally from the community as well. And I think I saw what the budget was, so it may be a moment before you can expand this to a second person in the office, but that would definitely be a goal, because, yeah, there will be a lot of education that would have to take place.
A lot, okay. All right, well, that was my only one. Mrs. Jacobs?
Thank you. Thank you all for being here. And Manager Hager, thank you for all of your work on this. I do, and this is our first opportunity that we've had to kind of get into the, what this is all about, and for us aboard to discuss it. And I think this is something that is, what is being proposed could have a big impact. And I do want to make sure that we are really clear on a lot of issues. And I have a lot of questions. I think one thing is that this needs to be built on a foundation of our existing policies and procedures. And to be honest, at this point, I'm not even clear on how, what our policies are and how they're working, and whether there are some things that need to be addressed with our grievance policies and processes, and our whistleblower policy, and any other relevant policies. So for me, you know, I think it would actually be helpful if we had a process where we have somebody coming in and helping us look at our current policies and processes, and if they're working okay or not, or any suggestions, because the Ombud's is going to be built on the assumption that we have processes that are already functioning well. And I do have concerns that there are some gaps in those areas. And I also really do want to understand, again, the interplay with HR, audit, our board, county manager, and that those are very clear, I think, in whatever the charter is. I would love to see the charter from, that's with Chapel Hill. Just clicking on the links to the Chapel Hill Office versus Orange County, Florida is very different. The Orange County, Florida office is focused on things like grievances and whistleblower ethics. Totally, totally different. The other question I have is that I would like to hear from UNC School of Government about their recommendations or what their thoughts are on this, because, you know, according to North Carolina General Statute, there are certain responsibilities for the Board of County Commissioners, county manager. And I just really want to understand, because it's different than for a municipality or for a university. And I want to be very clear just on those statutes. So I, you know, those are just, I think, some of my big concerns at this point, that more information that I would like. I mean, I can understand how this could help improve the culture within the organization, but again, I think we need to be very, very clear on, again, some of the things that I raised first that I would want to know. Thank you.
So what I'm hearing from the Board is that, ask for a full chart to see how this connects. And I'm also hearing from Commissioner Jacobs, and I'm sure the staff would not bring it back to us without looking at our policies to see how everything connects. And also, what's the School of Government's take on this with our statute? So does that mean that you need a little bit more work to be done? Do you need to bring it back?
That I would recommend that. Give us time to.
Yeah, do a little bit more work on this before we bring it back for approval. Does that work?
That works. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you for your presentation, and we'll look forward to hearing back from you. All right. So the next item is an update on the Triangle Bike Way Study. 10:30. 10:40.
Good morning. Ellen Beckman, Durham County Transportation Manager. I'm just going to quickly introduce Dale McKeel, who will give the presentation on the Triangle Bike Way. Dale is longtime DCHC MPO slash City of Durham Bicycle and Pedestrian Coordinator. And he, in coordination with his colleagues at Campo, led the development of this project, the Triangle Bike Way Study. So this is an informational presentation, and there is a requested action for the June 13th meeting to approve the resolution that's attached to the item.
Good morning. That's better.
Okay, good morning. I'm Dale McKeel with the Durham Chapel Carboro MPO. As Ellen mentioned, we've been working on the Triangle Bike Way Study for about two years now. And the purpose of this presentation is just to provide an overview of our findings and the recommendations of the study. The Triangle Bike Way is looking at providing a facility between Raleigh and Chapel Hill coming through Durham County that would provide a way for people to bicycle, walk, and use wheelchairs, other means of transportation that would be completely separated from traffic. This would be about a 23-mile corridor. It would go through all three counties of the triangle, and would also pass through the jurisdictions of Cary, Morrisville, Research Triangle Park, the City of Durham, and Towne of Chapel Hill. This is, as you know, a jobs-rich corridor. And one thing that we heard very strongly through this study was that there are a lot of people who work at these jobs in this area who really don't have any choices to get to their employment. And particularly, we hear a lot about electric vehicles, but particularly, there are electric-assist bicycles that are becoming more and more popular and provide ways to provide longer trips that a facility like the Triangle Bike Way would serve very well to allow options for people who do not want to or would prefer not to drive for all of their trips. This project has been discussed in some form for more than 20 years. Back in 2017, Wake County, through their Parks and Recreation Department, did a study of a bike way that would connect Raleigh into RTP. In 2019, there was interest in doing some more work on the Wake County to RTP section. The Capillary MPO over in Wake County approached. The Durham Chapel Carboro MPO asked us if they would, if we would be interested in partnering with them on this study to extend the bike way through our region. And that's sort of how we got to this point. There were many project goals for this project, some of which I've already mentioned, transportation choice, safety. Those were really very important components. Equity was a big focus of the project as well through our engagement and the work that we have done to provide equity in connecting this bike way to our existing transit networks as well as existing and proposed trails. So this, the Triangle Bike Way would serve as really a spine for a larger network of other trails that would serve the area. One part of the study, we looked at case studies. Where are there other communities that have built facilities similar to this? And there are a lot of them, as you can see on this map. One that's close to home is the Business 40 Side Path, which has been partially constructed. Other parts of it are still in the works in Winston-Salem. Another one is in Atlanta along the Georgia 400 Highway, and you can see it in this picture here. This project was getting underway just as the pandemic started, and we really had to pivot on our stakeholder engagement. This slide shows the myriad methods of engagement and processes that we used through the life of the study. I will highlight that we had a working group that represented a lot of different organizations that met every couple of months. I want to thank Commissioner Jacobs for being a very active member of that working group. We also met with elected officials in all the jurisdictions through which the study passes. We also had jurisdictional meetings with all of those jurisdictions where we met. We tried to meet with representatives from all the departments that would be involved with the study from a design and construction, but also ongoing maintenance and implementation once a facility like this got underway, so that everyone would be aware of what was going on. We were able to do some in-person engagement. And then we had virtual public meetings, which with a project of this type, which covered such a long, such a large area, those virtual public meetings were very successful. People did not have to drive 15, 20 miles to come to a public meeting. We were able to reach those, and we did some of those at lunch, and some of them in the early evening. And then we also had an online survey that had more than 4,000 participants through two different survey instruments. We did visualizations to really help our residents visualize what this facility would look like. I mentioned the working group. This is the, shows a lot of the members. So it was municipalities, NCDOT, businesses, transit agencies, and local advocates were all involved on this study committee. And this working group is now transforming into an implementation group that will continue to meet after the study is complete. When we did do our online surveys, we noted that there were some residents who did not participate. We looked at the corridor demographics, compared that to the survey demographics, and we did focus groups to try to fill in the gaps for the underrepresented groups. One thing that, after going through the focus group process, we did hear a lot of the same things from the focus groups that we had heard from our other surveys, that there was strong support for the project, the desire for equitable access, including access to transit and other facilities, and a real desire for a type of facility that would serve all ages and abilities and would be safe. We also heard that three-quarters of the respondents to our survey, and again, this was not a scientific survey, it was more of an anecdotal survey, but three-quarters of our respondents are currently commuting by car. But they desire to commute either biking or walking or some sort of combination. There's close to 80% said they would prefer to do that. And also, a lot of, 68% of our respondents said they would use this type of facility at least weekly. We looked at many alternatives for where the bike way could be placed, looking at various opportunities and constraints, which is environmental impact.
Hello? I hate the volume, the volume keeps going. Could you just pull it a little bit closer?
Hello? I hate the volume. The volume keeps going. Could you just pull it a little bit closer?
Sure, I'm sorry.
No, yeah, because we're recording.
Thank you for interrupting me to let me know that. So, looking at environmental impacts, the constructability, connectivity were some of the major factors. And ultimately, the recommendation is to, to start the cor- so, the corridor would follow NC 54 from Chapel Hill to Interstate 40. At Interstate 40, there would actually be a bridge going over Interstate 40 to the north side of Interstate 40. There would be an underpass at NC 751 at the existing American Tobacco Trail Bridge. The bike way would cross back over into the south side of Interstate 40, travel over to TDW Alexander Drive in RTP where it would move off of Interstate 40 and travel along NC 54 where it would cross in front of the Box Yard and the hub RTP development would continue on toward the proposed location of the Regional Transit Center and through the development there in the City of Durham at Imperial Center, crossing Interstate 540 and connecting back up to Interstate 40 again in the 40 corridor where it would travel to Wade Avenue, past the PNC Arena, and connect up to the existing pedestrian bicycle bridge over the Raleigh Belt Line. There, we have coordinated very closely with NC DOT since particularly we are proposing a project that would be about 70% within an existing NC DOT right-of-way. And they have, we met with a Control of Access Committee that would have to approve building this type of trail in their right-of-way. And so far, we have, we have heard positive comments from them regarding the ability to feasibly construct this type of project within their right-of-way. This is an illustration of what it would look like. So, the right-of-way along Interstate 40 is typically 300 to 400 feet, and the bike way would be located at the very back end of the, of the edge of the right-of-way in about a 16-foot footprint for the, for the bike way. So, this is what the typical section of the bike way would look like. There would be a six-foot area, which is shown on the left here, that would be for pedestrians. Then there would be a 10-foot area for two-way traffic for bicyclists and other people on wheeled. So, I want to talk a little bit about the cost estimates for the project. They are higher. They are pretty high. And that will be an issue that we will have to work through as far as implementing this project. There are some differences between this bike way and a typical greenway trail. For one thing, it's wider. It would have lighting. There's a lot of grade separation for the bridges and underpasses and some other factors that are, that are listed here. The construction cost in today's dollars in the Wake County segment, it would be about $45 million. The Durham and Orange segments would be $63 million. Implementation, so the, the study includes about, looks at four separate, four different scenarios for implementation, including a scenario where a lot of the project would be constructed independently and other scenarios where it would be sort of done on a jurisdiction-by-jurisdiction basis. And another scenario where a lot of the bike way would be constructed as part of other highway projects or other projects that are being done in the, along Interstate 40 and some of the other facilities that we talked about. There is a large checklist in the study listing next steps. Some of those, we've already accomplished. The project has been added to the Campo and Durham Chapel Hill Carboro Metropolitan Transportation Plans that were adopted earlier this year. We have created the Triangle Bike Way Regional Advisory Committee, as I discussed earlier. We are maintaining the website through some assistance from Triangle J Council of Governments. And we also, I think, an important component of moving forward with this type of project is having sources of private funding to supplement public funding. And we have had meetings with the 501(c)(3) that is based out of Triangle J Council of Governments, and they are interested in partnering with us to, to be a holder of funds for this project. I think the, you know, the big step that we would need to move the project forward would be to identify implementation strategy, including a project sponsor for the design phase. I will say that on the Wake County side, the Wake County Board of Commissioners are, will be considering a proposal later this month to fund design between Raleigh and Research Triangle Park. And they, they have some greenway and open space bond funds that they are considering using for this project. So, we will, let's see how that, how that moves forward. The resolution that Ellen mentioned doesn't commit you to, to funding this project or constructing this project, but it does ask for your support of the regional implementation of the project as it moves forward in helping to achieve this vision.
What is it about this mic that people have, feel they need to talk softly? You have to speak up. I'm sorry, just speak up a little louder because we can't, we're trying to hear you.
And would you like a glass of? I was going to ask too, Madam Chair, if it's okay. You're tapering off something. Would you like a glass of water?
Well, I'm at the end of the presentation.
Okay. I thought that was some of it as well. Or maybe we're just so nice, you feel like you can whisper.
We are having problems with our mics, so we're asking people to speak a little louder.
Okay, I do apologize.
Or it's just difficult for us to hear you. Thank you.
I was trying not to use my outside voice.
You can do that. That'll be fine with us.
Okay. So, the, the resolution is, this is the, for the resolved statement of the resolution. And I am glad to try to answer any questions or repeat anything that you didn't hear.
I didn't hear nothing about no money, so that's, so we can move on. So, I didn't hear that anyway.
Commissioner Alum?
Thank you. Thank you so much for this presentation. I had three questions. So, my first was around, like, along the trail, what kind of amenities or features would kind of be available for individuals who are using it? Like, will there be trash cans or, like, the lighting? And then also, for security, like, I know, like, on college campuses, they have those security poles in case of emergency. Will those type of services be provided along the trail?
Yes. And as I mentioned, the lighting is recommended, recommended by the study. We didn't get into a lot of details, such as the other amenities that you're, that you're asking about, but I think those are things that would be looked at more closely during the design phase of the project. The, as far as the emergency call boxes, we, there is, there is a lot of discussion about those. I know we have heard that from, from public, from other residents as well. And I think we would want to look at, you know, with the availability of cell phones, look at the cost versus the need of those. But that would be something we could look at in, in the future.
Yeah, because I know I've found those, even like, if you're biking alone or on areas alone, they provide a sense of security for individuals. And then, all the companies that are kind of like, along this trail or near, did they partner with y'all during the engagement process? Do, I know a lot of companies have, like, biking groups or communities within the company. Did they partner or provide opportunities for the MPO to come in and expand the engagement process through them?
Yes, and, and we have particularly worked very closely in Durham County with, with RTP and Scott Levitan, and have met with, with Scott and his staff and also with representatives from the businesses in RTP.
And then my last one was, along like the entrance points of the trail, would there be possibilities for, you know, the bike rental companies, like Bird? I know they have scooters, but I know they're, like, City Bike. Are there, is there going to be an opportunity for those type of companies to look into investing in having rental stands along the trail?
That will be a, probably a jurisdiction-by-jurisdiction discussion. For example, the City of Raleigh does now have a, have a bike share program. And so, I would imagine they would want to have some bike share stations along the corridor. Most of the other jurisdictions currently do not have that type of system. But if they did, I think they would want to have facilities along, along the trail.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Carter?
Thank you. Wow, this was a great presentation. Thank you, Dale and Ellen. And I feel incredibly excited about it. And I want to say, I feel even more excited about it than I might have five or 10 years ago because of the prevalence of these, the e-bikes, the, the electric-assist bikes. I feel like that could actually be a game changer for people who will actually use, you know, this type of facility now. And that with e-bikes, it makes it so much more likely that, you know, any of us could go out there and use this facility to get to work or, you know, to get, as actual transportation. So, I just think that the feasibility of having residents really make use of this in ways that will increase equitable access to jobs and opportunity has been magnified by the introduction, in a more prevalent way, of these electric-assist bikes. And that we really need to not minimize that. I feel like this is a really big deal. You know, I would have been in favor of this personally at any point in my history because I like to bike, but not everyone does. But you don't actually have to be a biker to use these electric-assist bikes. And I just think, you know, we all need to think about that when we think about how to, how we go about increasing access to opportunity for folks. And, you know, an electric bike, we could, they would be affordable enough that, you know, counties and cities could help provide those to residents that don't have them. But do they cost about $1,000, something like that?
The, the City of Durham is doing a lot of work in that area right now. And Sean Egan has been using an electric bike for several months now and is, is a big evangelist, I think, for electric bikes. But they do, they, I think they will be making some announcements about some programs very soon with electric bicycles and making those available to residents.
Yes. And so, you know, opens up opportunity of access. And it also, even though they may be electric and assist you, you can still pedal, and you do still pedal. And so, you are, you are also getting some physical activity that's, you know, healthy for both mental and physical health. And I thought that the survey results were very compelling in that the number of people who would really take advantage of this facility and also would like to, you know, be out of their car some and would like to be doing a hybrid of car and some other means of transportation like we could on this type of facility. So, I, I feel really excited about it. As far as costs, would there be state or, would there be state and federal funding opportunities to go along with the construction of a facility like this over time?
Yes, and that's, I think that's the strategy that Wake County is looking at, is, is they would fund design with local money and then seek to get federal funding through the bipartisan infrastructure law, some of the funding programs that are in that law to, to help fund the construction.
Great.
And those funds still, they still typically come with a local match. So, there still would be some local funding required.
Okay. And what is the cost of design in general?
It's typically about 10%, 10 to 15% of the construction cost.
Okay. All right.
So, I think Wake County is looking at somewhere in the range of $3 million, I believe.
Okay. I thought ours would be closer to 6, probably. Our design would be closer to 6, if it's 10%?
Probably.
Can I just jump in though? But they're studying all the way into Durham.
Oh.
That's true.
Okay. They're, they're, okay.
They're studying into the RTP Transit Center.
Okay. And how many total miles would be in the Durham Orange or Durham Chapel Hill corridor?
I don't know if I have that number for you. I will get that. It's probably around 14, 15.
Okay, that's good. Just ballpark. Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Just a couple of questions before going to decide. You know, when we, when, I get hooked anytime we start talking about electrical bikes, for electric bikes for our community that our citizens' tax dollars are paying. Because what that says is, here's this divide again. We are looking at a divide between the wealthy and the not wealthy, not so wealthy, when we start talking about electric, electric bikes. And what I would like to see that I didn't see, and maybe it's here, is what was the equity demographics or groups that you had to weigh in on this? Did that happen? Because this is, to me, it looks, cost, the cost of it looks ineffective for certain parts of our community. So, I'd like to hear where you weigh in on that.
Okay. Well, when we did our public outreach, as I mentioned, a lot of the surveying was done online, partly because of the pandemic. But we did do focus group meetings with, to try to fill in the gaps demographically with the groups that we, that we spoke to. And so, and, and from our focus groups, we did speak to residents, a lot of whom have more blue-collar type jobs in RTP and areas surrounding in this, in this corridor. And they said, particularly with, with some of the go-triple bus services that do not run later in the evening when they are, when they are working, that they would like to have options for getting home at night or later in the evening when the bus services are not as robust.
Do you have that information accessible for us?
Yes, it, well, some of that information is in the report, but I will, I will go back and dig that up, and we can, we can.
I'd like, I'd like to see that because it's, we, we can't exclude people in this community and have this, continue with this divide that we do.
Right.
Madam Chair, could I just, maybe I wasn't clear about why I thought this actually could help enhance equity? And just if I could just add a little bit more there. I mean, one reason I think it could minimize the divide, because I, I hear what you're saying. You're absolutely right. Think about cars, the cost of a car, so unaffordable for folks. But one of these e-bikes, much more affordable, $1,000 versus $50,000, and might even be something that municipalities, cities, and counties could consider establishing a fund for to distribute to people who don't have a means of transportation. It just seemed like something, you know, that would open up an amazing, you know, possibilities for discussion. Nothing that we know for sure, but just, it, it seemed like a possibility of something that might help minimize the divide instead of magnifying it.
Yeah, it, it could, you're right, it could open up dialogue, but I'd like to see what kind of dialogue we've already had. Since we've gotten down the road this far, I'd like to see that information before I can say that I'm on board. Because we keep doing these things.
Right. Well, and I will say that, a couple of the things, you know, as, as Commissioner Carter mentioned, some communities are doing rebates or some sort of incentive programs for electric bicycles. I believe Denver just, just had one. They actually had to cap it because they, they had so many requests. We also have a great resource in our community, the Durham Bike Co-op, which will work with, with anyone who needs a bike to help them get a bike. They work with, they work with low-income residents, they work with refugees coming into the, into our community. into the into our community. And they help them get on a bike, understand the transit system, understand how to how to get the job. So we do have some resources to help address the equity concerns that you're raising. But I will also go back and and pull some data from the study that will help show some of the findings that we had in those conversations.
I appreciate that. Commissioner Burns?
Yes ma'am, what are you doing?
I, I'm, go ahead.
Okay. I, I, I hear all sides of this, you know, I really paid attention. I'm going to also make the same request that my chair made, that I need to see this full report and the tabulations, and here's why. So if we go to slide, I'm gonna just start at slide 22. So here, here's where my problems come in, y'all. One, I'm not against bikes, right? I like a bike. I like the fact that, you know, we have EDMs that say, oh, it's like riding a bike. Because indeed, once you learn how to do it, just about everybody can do it. Problem is, everybody can't afford to do it. And I do hear what folks are saying about the e-bikes. But there's a reason why, what was it before the pandemic, years before the pandemic? We had, what was it, five different companies that were in Durham that had electric bikes? And they were like a dollar an hour, and that's not really cost prohibitive, but you need to have a debit card and a cellphone to access them. So those things are kind of sort of prohibitive. And I didn't know anybody poor that used any. The only people I knew were folks that were middle class to upper middle class who were black. A lot of the companies, if you reach out to Bolt, Lime, anybody else, the reason why they left Durham because the bikes started to go missing. Because those locks became pretty easy to take off. And then they just got left in people's yards. Because they will lock up on you once the hour hits. I'm just, I'm just throwing this stuff out there. There's, I, I know, and I'm gonna look up Denver when we get done, right? We're all flying to Denver, some of us are flying to Denver in a month. And that might be one of the meetings that I have to have. I got to meet the mayor of Denver last month. And I, and I'm, we more than happy after this meeting to reach out and say, hey, what does it look like? But let's look at the gaps in the survey. So we know that the corridor demographics are 20% black. And I get that you all did focus groups, but even when you did, this survey had 3.3% response from black folks. Did you all do the focus group before or after the survey? I assume after.
Correct.
Okay, good, okay. I was about to say if it was before, I was gonna be a little bit worried. So, okay, we, I appreciate that. Like you saw, we did not get the response we wanted from folks who were in the corridor. So we're gonna go back there. Here's the reason why I want to see the tabulations and I actually want to see the questions. It says stakeholder engagement commute patterns. Current commute, it says 73% of the folks use cars. Desire commute, which is I'm assuming what answer you got at the survey, is 10%. I am struggling, I am really struggling to believe. Now, I do see combo moved up from 20% to 61%, but I'm really struggling to believe that after we did stakeholder engagement, that folks said 63% say, you know what, I would rather use, I would rather start to use a bike. Bikes are just cost prohibitive, y'all. Like they're not cheap. I'm with Commissioner Long. I heard about the lighting, I did. Lighting is really expensive. Lighting per mile for this project is more expensive than a bus stop. Like that's the thing that I, and I want lighting there, I want people to be safe. I'm like Commissioner Long, the buttons that have to be out there. Like I was on a college campus, I knew what it was like to walk late at night. And so I'm thinking about somebody who is working a third shift or a second shift at Duke Hospital. And I'm thinking about that person because that's who's using the bus in Durham. Let's really be honest. I'm thinking about that person getting on, saying, yes, I want to walk in the dark through Durham after I get off my shift at seven o'clock at night or three o'clock in the morning. And I want to walk on this 30 mile path that might or might not have lighting. So I would love to see what the question looked like. Because if they just answered vaguely or they answered broadly, of course, you know, residents are always gonna say we want options. But I'm just trying to think through the options. And that's not me being a naysayer or oppositionist. I get it, I know how this community is, they want their bike lanes. They want their bike ways, they want their pedestrian walkways, they want all of these things. I just want to make sure that when we're out here saying equity for equity's sake, like let's be honest, like I, I struggle if I was to, I would love to hold a stakeholder group myself, and maybe I just might, because I see y'all said you had 10 elected official events. I don't know when those were. And maybe I wouldn't have elected then when they started, because you said some of this was during the pandemic and some of it was pre-pandemic. I was lucky enough to walk into one because the community group invited me at two times. I was able to walk into one once I found out about it. But I would love to, and and not even getting naysayers in the room, but, and this is nothing against the consultant group, but it was like, you know, lessons that you learned. I just feel like some of these are lessons that y'all shouldn't have had to learn. And I know that if that sounds rude to a consultant firm, I do apologize. It says avoid outreach during a presidential election or pandemic surge. Y'all, that's something that I just feel like, partner with a paid, community rooted outreach professional. I feel like darn, we've been doing this long enough that that should have been like baked into the marrow of any survey that we did. And it said trust must be built and earned and it will take time. I just feel like that's stuff that we know about Durham. And so those are some of the concerns. And that's why I go back and say I completely agree with my chair that while this presentation, I'm optimistic about some of it. I would really like to see the full report and I would love to see the questions from the survey and I want to see the tabulations. But we can find money for everything that some groups won't. And I just struggle to find, understand how we can't find money for other things, is all I'm saying. But thank you for the presentation and I hope that we get those reports. Also, hello Ellen, hadn't acknowledged you yet. Also acknowledging our city councilman Leonardo Williams, we saw you sneak in and I see some of your staffers here, Manager Page. But that's, that's all I have. I'm sure other folks have questions.
Thank you.
Mr. Jacobs?
Thank you Dale for the presentation. Obviously, I'm familiar with the project because I was part of the group. And everyone has raised great questions. I do want to encourage everyone to look at the 167 page report when you have a chance because there is a lot of information there. And then on pages 25 through 27, they do look at the vulnerable communities, the demographics and things like that. I want to, what I want to just say is number one, there's, we're not being asked to actually fund this, but the, what's important is actually approving the plan or the resolution because it allows other people to help pay for it in Durham County. And what I mean by that is that this, we, this isn't our adopted 2050 major transportation plan, metropolitan transportation plan. But because we are a region and this is a regional, you know, infrastructure, number one, the research Triangle Park is updating their bikeways and trails. And they want to actually make those investments consistent with the plan. So they need us to adopt the plan so that they can go ahead and use this as a basis for their investments. The second is that, as you, as Dale mentioned, Wake County is actually going to start the design phase, but they want to come all the way into Durham County. And they want to do their design all the way to the Regional Transportation Center where the Go Triangle buses are and in the middle of RTP. And again, we need to adopt it so they can spend the money in Durham County. The third reason is that NC DOT, I think one of the brilliant things about this plan is that it uses NC DOT right of way, which means that we don't have to pay for any land. And so what it means is when NC DOT does any improvements on 54 or 40, now they can actually help potentially take on the cost of building this bike, this bike and pedestrian trail basically for us. So again, it doesn't require us to spend any money. It allows it to move forward with other partners. And as Dale mentioned, there now is an organization of 5013C, 5013C in Triangle J Council of Governments that allows the private sector to fund this. And I do think if, you know, if we do put money towards it in the future, we have to have an equity plan around how everyone in our community can use it. I also wanted to say, if we look at the American Tobacco Trail, we can see what has happened and how people, you know, everyone uses that. And it is such an important way that people get exercise, that for their mental health. I mean, during the pandemic, I know it was a lifesaver for a lot of people. But that's what, how this has served other communities is that not everybody uses it for commuting. Some people use it just to exercise and that, and it would be up to us to really make that accessible and connected. So it's just really a first step. And so I think that was all the main things I wanted to emphasize. Thank you.
Quick, quick follow up. I don't want anyone to leave here and think that I didn't look at the 167 page report. The report I'm asking for, I want to know what those survey answers were. And I think that's a fair question. Because on page 67 of that 167 page report, it says that the focus groups were done between November 11th and November 20th for those underrepresented groups. And there were three engagement meetings. I would imagine, and I think again, it was for households that were under $75,000. We recognize that the folks who ride buses, who probably answered their questions are way under the $75,000 mark. We've gone through a two year pandemic, the answers might be different. So again, this is not me requesting a report that I have access to. I am, and I think Commissioner Howerton is also saying, we want to see the survey results from that. So again, to clarify, so that nobody thinks I ain't read the report that's in front of me. Thank y'all.
Yeah, it, I think it's real clear for this board that it's not something that we are gassed, we just asking for information. And, and before I can move forward, I, I need that information. So if you could do that for us, we can go from there. Anything else? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, let's see, the next item is City of Durham Transit Update. And that is Sean Egan, our City of Durham Transportation Director. Ellen is here as well, thank you.
Okay, thank you. I'll just again introduce Sean Egan, the City's Transportation Director, who's here to provide an update on the city's transit projects and funding. This has been discussed for a few months now, and so I'm really happy that we have this on the agenda. Hope it can help answer some of the questions that you've had over the course of several meetings. And I know he has a large number of staff and support here, so I'll let him introduce it and then give his presentation.
Thanks Ellen. So I'll do some quick introductions. Commissioner Burns mentioned that council member Leonardo Williams is with us, City Manager Wanda Page and Deputy City Manager Keith Chadwell. I'm also joined by our, some of our team members who work regularly on these projects. So Tom Devlin, who's our Business Services Manager, Evian Patterson is our Assistant Director for Transit and Parking. And then Aaron Convery in the very back row is our Transportation Planning Manager. And Allison Coltrane is our Business Services Administrator for Transit. So this is very much a team effort. And then Aaron Kane from the Durham Chapel Hill Carboro MPO has also been working together with us on these projects. So along with Ellen, serving on many of our technical committees. So excited to get started. So I think most of you are familiar with the current conditions at Durham Station. There's inadequate canopy coverage, drainage and landscape issues in the center court area that result in the conditions that you see here. So working with funding from the Durham County Transit Plan in partnership with Go Triangle, we developed a schematic design to address the improvements that we heard from our riders that they were the most interested in. So we conducted, we looked at survey responses from several studies that we've done around the Durham County Transit Plan, the Go Durham Short Range Transit Plan, the Move Durham Study. And then we did some direct engagement with riders at Durham Station. And what we heard consistently was that folks were being left out in the rain, in the elements, waiting for the bus, that they needed restrooms and customer information on the platform, that they were concerned about pedestrian safety, and that they wanted a more attractive and welcoming site. So all of those inputs from our customers were given to the design team and they were tasked with developing a schematic design that responded to what we had heard from that community engagement work. We also are at a point now where we have reached the maximum capacity of our bus bays. And so we're setting up temporary bus bays that do not have full access the way that we want to maintain. So we also asked the team to look at growing the number of bus bays as well as being able to accommodate larger buses used for bus rapid transit. So this is what the design team came up with, looking at having it be a more welcoming entrance coming in from Pettigrew Street and then also having bus bays on Pettigrew to improve the speed and reliability of our services and enable more through services. You can see the canopy coverage there and you can see the landscape elements. And we're moving away from what you see with dirt in the center court and ponding and water issues and having more improved surface, better landscape elements, and then also customer information and restrooms available on the platform. All of that has to be accommodated with the appropriate drainage and stormwater management. And so that was a significant challenge for the team, but they came up with some very creative solutions. So we really want this, you know, we have, this is a facility that serves 15,000 riders a day. And it is very much a gathering place for our community. So we wanted to incorporate elements like a plaza and better seating because we know that this is a place where people in our community come together. And we also know that improvements that we make at Durham Station are going to disproportionately benefit disadvantaged communities in Durham. So looking at our rider surveys, we know that 80% of our Go Durham riders are people of color. We know that over 70% have incomes below $25,000 a year. We talked in the previous item about 75,000. We stopped asking at 35,000 because we've already hit about 85% of our riders at the $35,000 mark. And then two thirds of our Go Durham riders live in a zero car household. So that means that transit is their transportation, they don't have a car at home. So their transportation, their ability to get to work, to get to school, to get things at the store that they need for their families relies on the quality of transit service that they have available to them. So we developed this schematic design and submitted it to the Federal Transit Administration last year for the Bus and Bus Facilities Program. We were very excited to learn in March that the project had been selected and awarded the full request of $10.8 million from that program. So we have requested a local match of $2.7 million from the Durham County Transit Plan over two years. And I'm also glad to report that solicitation work is now underway for both construction management services for the project as well as final design services. So both of those solicitations have been released by the city's General Services Department. I participated in two pre-bid conferences last week to address, to kind of share the goals of the project and address any questions from prospective bidders. So we are moving forward with that project. We had a great event at Durham Station with Congressman David Price in April that Chair Howerton and Vice Chair Jacobs were able to participate in. So really excited for the opportunities that this offers. So really excited for the opportunities that this offers, and that it really, we want to make sure that it continues to be focused on delivering the improvements that our riders asked for through all those engagement efforts. So now I'll move into the Better Bus Project. So we're really looking at three core elements. Access to the bus. We know from our rider surveys that 80% of our riders on Go Durham walk to and from the bus stop. We are not a park-and-ride service where people drive up to a big parking lot, and then that's how they get to our system. Our riders rely on pedestrian facilities, sidewalks, crosswalks, curb ramps, in order to be able to get to and from their bus stop safely. So that access is critical. The bus stops themselves, we've heard consistently from our riders, that they want shelters, benches, lighting, trash cans, customer information, like when is that next bus going to arrive? They want to see those elements at their bus stop. And then bus service. How do we make, how do we look at the network, where we're seeing delays, and look at traffic signals, pavement markings, and signage? What are the things that we can do to address bus speed and reliability? And there are other things like looking at the location of a bus stop. Is it on the near side of the intersection or the far side of the intersection? Looking at crowding onboard the bus, which slows buses down. Anyone who's ever been on a crowded bus and seen how long it takes for people to get on and off, that slows the bus down, that harms our reliability and on-time performance. So we're looking at all of those contributors and issues around bus speed and reliability, even the route that the bus takes. So is it taking a circuitous route with lots of twists and turns, because it's going to take a lot longer to reach its destination than if it were taking a more direct path? So what are the things, what are the opportunities that we have in our route design to make, to kind of straighten and strengthen our routes, and use that to improve bus speed and reliability? So we did our first round of public engagement in 2021. We did both online and in person. We also reached out to our transit operations staff at Go Durham, the folks who drive our buses every day. And then we did walking tours where we spoke with residents and riders who use our services along the corridor, and had them point out to us, this is, this is an example of what needs to get fixed. So it was very much in-person experience. And then we also had community conversations with trusted community members to talk about what, what types of improvements that communities wanted to see. So our model for doing this was to engage with community partners. So the city's Neighborhood Improvement Services Department has stood up a community partner program that provides contracts for community engagement support to trusted groups that live and work in our community. And so we, they also provide capacity building, training on making sure that these organizations, mostly small nonprofits, in some cases they have to form or build an alliance with a nonprofit organization in order to meet all of the procurement requirements and financial management requirements. So working on that capacity building, helping these organizations through those challenges that come with contracting with public bodies. So we worked with the MEA, the Bragtown Community Association, the Fayetteville Fellows, and the Durham Committee on the Affairs of Black People Incorporated through that first phase. And this gave us access to communities that have historically been excluded from the decision-making process. So we wanted to really recognize that history of exclusion and focus our investment, our engagement on making sure that we're prioritizing and centering our engagement around communities historically excluded from government decision-making processes. So you can see some of the work that we did. We did the Bragtown Bus Tour. On the picture on the right, you can see Commissioner Carter and Ellen walking at the Lakeview Park. So this was a great opportunity for elected officials and staff to see firsthand the needs for improvement that we have in our community. We went, in our second phase, we continued our work with two of the groups, and we really focused on the groups that were demonstrating that authenticity and that institutional knowledge and history, understanding the communities, understanding their history and their challenges. And we brought the community partners in both phases into our technical work. So when the technical committee was meeting, we made sure that there was an opportunity for the community partner groups to fully participate in that process, to share what they have heard, and then to learn about some of the opportunities that we have to address the concerns that they heard, and then bring that information back to their communities, and let their communities know that their voices are being heard and are being incorporated into the process. And in other cases, if the community partners saw something that looked amiss, didn't look right to them, they were, they were going to let us know, and they did let us know. And that's really critical, to make sure that we're getting that type of input incorporated early in the process, make sure that we're on the right track, that what we're doing really is responsive to what we've heard through our community engagement. So, and our engagement is not, because the way the community partner approach works, it's not limited to a single survey that's in the field for a set number of days or weeks. It is a continuous commitment to engagement of community representatives throughout the entire project planning and design process. So we do have some phases where we do kind of a surge in data collection around that, but this is an ongoing conversation and commitment that we've built with our community partners to make them a part of this process throughout. And so what we heard a lot of from this engagement was the need to add or repair sidewalks, crosswalks, and then look at debris, obstacles, trash. And then we asked them, well, how do we, you know, how should we be thinking about prioritizing where we want to make improvements? They were focused on the busiest stops, but also low-wealth and Black Indigenous people of color communities, as well as youth and people with disabilities. So all of that information has helped us to identify priorities. We did a check-in on the demographics of the corridor, and we're, we overperformed in our survey with Black and African-American, and there's a little bit of a disconnect here, I think, because the Hispanic is, includes both white and non-white Hispanic on the census demographics. But this is a breakdown of, I think, non-Hispanic, white, that 29%, and then 18% Latino, Latina on the right side there. So we made sure that the folks that we were engaging with and who were responding with, when we were doing the surveys, were representative, and if anything, overrepresented traditionally excluded communities. So the bus access is, you know, those sidewalks and crosswalks within a quarter mile of our routes. Many of you have seen conditions like this out in the field, where there's trash and debris at a stop, where there's an open drain that someone could trip and fall and get injured, where there's a dirt path, where clearly people are using this, because you can see the dirt path along the grass there, and that tells you that a sidewalk is needed, or there are some really interesting obstructions, like a mailbox in the middle of a sidewalk. So that's where we are today. We're looking at examples where we have done significant new sidewalk investments. That middle shot is one of our newer shelters. That location is fully ADA compliant, it has an eight-foot from back of curb for wheelchairs to be able to enter and exit a bus in addition to the shelter. And then looking at some creative approaches to provide better facilities for pedestrians. So we looked across our system and developed 12 miles of projects that needed to be studied for feasibility and assessment for future improvements. So these are the locations. There are a lot of small sidewalk segments, sidewalk gaps on here. What we're seeing particularly with the enactment of the Bipartisan Infrastructure Law last year is that there is now a significant addition of federal funding available for projects like these that provide access to transit. So we want to make sure that we've done the analysis, the planning work, so that when an opportunity like Safe Streets for All, which came out, I think, last month, comes up, these projects, we've already done the groundwork on the, on these projects, on these locations, to know what we, are there right-of-way issues, what's the length, what other obstructions or challenges do we have at the site? And so that's what this enables us to do, and then we're incorporating those. For example, the Dearborn Drive and Club Boulevard segments on here are incorporated into an application that we submitted in May for the FTA Bus and Bus Facilities Program for the Route 9 corridor. That was shown in the Bragtown photo earlier. So doing that groundwork on these locations enables us to do an overall application, like Safe Streets for All, or to incorporate some of these into the grant applications like we did for the Route 9 corridor in May, as well as for the Holloway Corridor that we submitted for the RACE 2022 process in April of this year. So we're also trying to improve the customer experience at the stop and make sure that the stops have the amenities like shelters, seating, lighting, trash cans that our riders need. So what you see here is a signpost on the left, in the middle of tall grass, with trashcan next to it. This is, the middle photo is the second busiest bus stop location in Durham. It's at the Village Transit Center. And so, and cleanliness, lighting, and other elements are lacking at that facility, so that's part of our focus. And then you see on the right, kind of another example of, you can see that there's demand there, people are walking up where the dirt is, but we have not provided appropriate facilities, improved walkways, and clearance is needed for wheelchair access, for example, as a minimum. So these are some of our more kind of aspirational locations. You can see a semi-seat on the left where we have limited space available. We can't, in all cases, do a full shelter build-out, but we still want there to be seating available. At stops where there is space for a shelter, we want to have a shelter, seating, lighting, trashcan, a wheelchair space. And then for some of our other really high ridership space stops, like the Glenview Station Walmart in northeast Durham, we have a pull-off bus bay in addition to those other elements, as well as, one of the issues that we heard a lot from our riders about there was that there were grocery carts that were blocking the way to and from the bus stop. And so we worked with the Walmart to have a grocery cart return there. So bus speed and reliability is looking at where there are delays and what we can do to move people more quickly to their destinations. We use this kind of heat map. You can see the bright red areas tend to be those in downtown Durham. We've got a lot of buses, a lot of bus riders moving through, and so when you add up all the minutes of delay, you know, if a bus gets delayed by two minutes and there are 30 people on that bus, that's an hour of delay. And if you have multiple routes traveling in the same corridor, and that delay is experienced over the course of weeks, months, or years, so we're trying to move away from the traditional traffic level of service analysis that looks at delay to vehicles, and move toward a more person-focused approach, and say, well, we're more concerned about the delay to a vehicle that's carrying 30 people than we are to a vehicle that's carrying one person. So let's multiply that delay by the number of people who are impacted by it. And so that's the approach that's used to, to generate these heat maps, and downtown, as well as our two transit emphasis corridors, do experience significant delay. So what we're trying to do with the emphasis corridors is put all of these elements, so access to and from the stop, the stop itself, and then our bus speed and reliability issues, put all of these things together and have a high-quality experience for our riders up and down the limits of those corridors. And so we pulled together the existing conditions data, we did walking tours, you can see Evian in the photo on the right there. So there's really no substitute for getting out there and seeing firsthand some of the conditions that we're experiencing, and talking through some of those challenges. So we did as much of this in person as we were able to do. So that has informed recommendations for the access to transit work, the bus speed and reliability work, as well as the Fayetteville Corridor. We're finalizing recommendations right now on the Holloway Corridor, and there's some additional work to do on the Transit Emphasis Zone, that's the area immediately around Durham Station, as well as on the Village Transit Center. But those efforts are wrapping up right now, and we're going to be doing community engagement starting later this month around those recommendations. So I'll hit a couple of points of interest. We did launch our first van pool to the Trayburn Corporate Park in April. We're in the process right now of updating our agreement with Go Triangle to look at the appropriate roles and responsibilities for management of our operations, as well as service planning and customer amenities. And then we've looked at the kind of history of property tax revenues. So going back to 2013, the property tax that the city levies specifically for transit was 6.6 million. As of March of this year, it was 14.3. It's a little higher than that with the latest figure. So that's a significant increase in support for, that goes directly into our city's transit system and transit that serves residents from the city and county. And then we've requested operating support for continuation of service improvements that have been made. For example, we were able to add 15-minute service from, on the entire Route 5 corridor all the way to South Point in 2020. Some of those service frequency improvements were made possible by prior-year awards, so. so continuing all of those prior-year awards and then looking at additional service needs on the Route 9 corridor. For example, adding frequency evenings and weekends on the Route 9 corridor, adding service on the Route 3 corridor to address crowding. So all of those projects are, so most of that value is continuation of prior awards, but there are some new initiatives to address the findings that we've reached. So as I said, we've got one van pool in place. We're one person short of a second van pool. We got some good media coverage around the launch of that program. We're working with other businesses at the park, Merck, and AW, and then doing some outreach to some of the other employers there to try to make sure that we're reaching their riders and really demonstrate Vanpool as a proof of concept, that this is something that can be a good option, a more sustainable transportation approach for employers there. And we really want to be able to point to the current use and the experience of current users of Vanpool as we move then into talking to, you know, prospective employees about how, you know, transportation may be a barrier to employment at Trayburn today, but with the continued availability of these van pools, folks can address that transportation gap. We've also launched the Go Durham Connect Zone in East Durham. So what this does is it provides a lift trip similar to what's offered in Research Triangle Park. It can be up to $25 per trip, but the trip has to begin and end within this zone that you see in the slide here. But we know that there are major destinations in this zone, and so folks from, whether it's an apartment complex or the county library, where there's not service, or where there's service that, like the 3C, that's only one an hour, or 3B, folks can get into, from some of those locations into the Village where they can then rely on, they can know that there's a bus every 15 minutes going into downtown. So that program is underway right now, and here are some of the destinations that it can serve. So we're looking at a second deployment of the North Durham Zone for launch this summer. So this is our, some of the major destinations that we're looking at, and we're in the public engagement process for that right now, but trying to take a similar approach here that we're taking in East Durham. We know that fixed route bus service can be a real challenge. If you can provide it at all, it's often at a 60-minute interval. That's really not what folks need, whereas this provides more of an on-demand service for areas that don't have as much of that high demand that would warrant a bus route. So this, we're hoping to launch later this summer by Labor Day. So as part of the city's request to the plan this year, there were three full-time equivalent positions for Transit Plan Administration, a construction team leader, and then a construction manager and planner engineer who would report to that position. So we're moving now beyond the planning and operational analysis phases of the Better Bus Project. We have a great number of plans that we have developed in Durham for improvements, and then we really struggle to get beyond planning and into implementation. There are significant additional resources that are needed to actually deliver on the recommendations that are being made in the plans. And so we need to grow our project delivery capacity. The folks assembled here have worked very hard to get us to this point where we have a set of recommendations and a plan, but we really need additional project delivery capacity to take on projects that are, you know, over $20 million in the next two years. So we also want to make sure that we're providing timely and complete reporting to our funding partners. And so having folks who are focused entirely on transit plan projects enables more timely and more complete reporting to be provided. So just for some context, the city of Durham has never had any project management positions funded by the Durham County Transit Plan. So this will be the first-ever award of funding to the city of Durham for project management. The, our partners in the plan, Go Triangle has about $1.6 million for 6.4 positions, as well as contractual support for the same types of needs, for managing plans, studies, projects, the bus stop program, the studies of the Regional Transit Center. So those positions have been in place. Durham County has funding for a staff position, and the DCH, the MPO, has funding for half of a staff position. So those requests are, were also included in the draft program that was published for public comment in April. Just to give some perspective on how this is managed across our region, in Wake County in 2016, they anticipated that staffing was going to be a significant issue. So they created a staffing model. They looked at, what's the value of projects that are being sponsored by each of the entities? And then what do we think is a reasonable amount of staff for, whether it's the town of Cary or the city of Raleigh, to be able to advance and deliver these projects efficiently? And so they developed that model, and they've been working and growing the support as projects like the four BRT lines that the city of Raleigh is doing, as those are now advancing. One of those, the New Bern Avenue project, is very close to having a full funding grant agreement with the Federal Transit Administration. That's the result of the commitment of staff who wake up every day and spend every day focused on nothing but transit improvements. So, you know, our folks are spending their time on transit projects, as well as other initiatives like bicycle pedestrian, infrastructure, or mobility needs. We really need folks who spend all day, every day, and that's how you get to a point where Raleigh is now, where you've got a potential full funding grant agreement. You're moving your projects forward towards successful delivery. So the, the model there is very clear. So the types of things that the project management staff would do are, you know, implementation and execution, looking at all of the elements. What's the project budget? What's the project schedule? What are the recommendations? Are there decisions that need to be made? Are we making sure that we're, we're getting timely action on those decisions? What are the deliverables that we're supposed to be getting for this project? Are we staying on budget? Are there effective controls? You know, have we gotten all the comments that we need? So we get a lot of comments through these processes. We, we have large technical teams consisting of MPO staff, Go Triangle staff, Durham County staff, making sure that we're collecting all of those comments and responding to them. So, and then providing updates, reporting on project activities to our funding partners, you know, the governing boards of those entities, and then making sure that we're continuing the community engagement throughout the life of these projects. Community engagement is not something that we just do at the very beginning, and then we make recommendations and we walk away. We continue to have that engagement throughout the life of the project to make sure that what we're doing continues to be responsive to the needs of the community and that those voices are included every step of the way in the process. So just to give some sense of, of the history of transit funding over the last nine years, since while we've had the sales tax in place, so you can see back to 2013, the, the second line down under revenue source is transit plan revenue. So that's funding coming from the Triangle taxed district. So that's primarily the, the half-cent sales tax that was approved in 2011, but also some motor vehicle fees that are allocated to that tax district at this time. So we were at $0 in 2013, and that has steadily grown to $6 million last year as we've implemented more and more services, adding frequency across our network and improving connectivity. So the passenger revenue you see kind of drops off in 2021 as we went fare-free during the pandemic. And then we lost our state funding in 2021 due to action at the General Assembly, so that's our state maintenance assistance program. So that helps transit agencies and operators across the state to make sure that they can continue to provide services. And then the local funding that you see second from the bottom, that's primarily the city property tax, the 3.75 currently cents for the property tax, as well as some other motor vehicle taxes and fees that flow to the fund. And then just looking, that's the historic, looking out, you can see that we're benefiting from federal COVID relief in '22, '23, '24. That funding will be exhausted in '24. We're hoping to have continued uninterrupted state funding, but we'll be continuing to provide local funding and the plan. This, this assumes essentially that we continue currently funded services in the coming years, since we haven't gotten final decisions yet on the FY23 requests. So once those decisions are final, when there is an adopted Durham County Transit Plan, we can come back and revisit some of these. You'll see a little uptick in 2025. That's due to funding that's needed for rehabilitation of the six buses that were purchased in 2018 to expand service. So the, the transit plan revenue pays for the buses when we get them initially, and then when they need a major rehabilitation, engine transmission replacement, repainting, reupholstering of the seating at a midlife, the plan pays for those. So there are some upticks associated with those rehabilitations. So that, I don't know how to stop this, but that concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to address any questions from the commissioners.
Thank you so much for your presentation. Anything for you?
I, I don't have anything planned, but I'm happy to help answer questions that you may have as well. You know, a lot of what Sean presented overlaps with transit items that have been on the past few months' agendas, so a lot of this stuff hopefully is fresh in your minds. And just as a reminder, right now, we have, what, what came to the commissioners in May was work comments on the FY23 work program. Those went to the staff working group. The staff working group made a vote on what should be in there, and it has gone to the Go Triangle Board. And the Go Triangle staff have, have provided an update for that, for what they're going to be presenting. It, relevant to this presentation, it doesn't include the three staff positions. It, and it doesn't include the additional request for the Fayetteville and Holloway corridor projects, but there's existing money that's already been approved for those projects so that they can continue. So that's, that was, that's where the FY23 budget is at. It's at the Go Triangle Board. You know, the Go Triangle Board ultimately makes the decision there. And then the second part of it, for the May items, were the four transit plan amendments. So that was funding for the Durham Station improvements, mentioned in the presentation, funding for additional bus service on Route 9, North Durham, and a new North Durham crosstown route. So that's, that was in there, and then the, what else? There was the, a paratransit facility. There's a new paratransit facility being planned, so it would be funding for the purchase of land for that and advancing that to the next stage of planning and design. And then lastly, additional funding for more Go Durham bus stop improvements. So we have like an ongoing Go Durham bus stop improvement project in the plan that will take years, that we are working on. Go Triangle manages that project. It's a Go Durham project, but it's managed by Go Triangle, so that I think that's important to note, that the city and Go Triangle work together on developing city transit projects. So the Go Triangle staff are working on the city's behalf. So that's, that was included in that amendment as well, so the additional funding to continue the Go Durham bus stop improvement project. So that's still outstanding, and it does require approval by the Board of Commissioners. The transit plan amendments have to be approved by the three governing boards, you know, set by state law, the Board of Commissioners, the MPO Board, and the Go Triangle Board.
Okay, thank you. So let's get to the questions that commissioners may have. Who wants to start? Commissioner Burns?
Okay. Thank you for your presentation, Sean. I really appreciate it. Ellen, always a pleasure. I do, my, I will try to be quick. I will start with the good and then I'll have my questions, which none of them are bad. So you'll have to pick the pen up. One, I think I'm, I'm happy that, you know, Ellen went over a couple of things. She says, you know, last month, we had a couple of presentations, you know, we've talked about bikes, we've talked about pedestrians, we've talked about bus stations, we've talked about Go Triangle. I just want to illustrate for the community, it takes all of that to get us as residents to and fro. Like, it literally takes an entire whole system, ecosystem, mini-city to get, to be able to touch everyone's needs, because we do recognize that everybody doesn't have a car. So I want to just take some, two seconds to go back and look at the last presentation and look at this one, and just, you know, again, these are not criticisms or critiques, they're observations. And I just, that last survey, first thing we pointed out, they stopped theirs at 75,000, y'all stopped y'all's at 35,000. So we have to think also as elected officials about what our data points really mean, especially when we're dealing with two. If we're saying we're focused on, on underserved groups, I would be great if we actually had, you know, some kind of set standard of what underserved group is, right? And I don't know if we have that. And I would love to go back almost even to last year and see the last time we had this presentation and what that stop was. Now, I'm also smart enough, I, I get it, you know, when we think about who's going to be on the pedestrian trail, nine times out of 10, it's not, it's not the folks that we're talking about here. It's just not. That doesn't mean we don't need to build a trail, but we also don't need to sit here and say we did, one, I'm happy that we did everything that we could do to be as inclusive as we could be, but let's, let's, let's talk in reality. And so I, this presentation, you know, gave me a lot more hope today because I feel like the last presentation, it's not that people were not heard, it's just that's a different audience. This is a completely different audience. So when you hear Commissioner, Commissioner Howardton and I speaking up, it literally is because we want to make sure that every audience is spoken for. It doesn't mean I don't care about people that ride bikes. Doesn't mean I don't care about people that walk. I like walking on a tobacco trail. I really used to do, like walking on the wall. I wanted to throw out, if you all remember from the last presentation, the surveyors answer, or you can go back and look at this, that they were proponents of the pedestrian and bike trail as long as it was within an integr- and bike trail, as long as it was within an integration of the whole system. So I also want us to remember that, there are going to be a lot of people that look at this as a combo. So, to your point, we do not have a bus system. You said at the end of the beginning, we do not have a bus system where people park in a big garage, and they walk into the bus. So there's where the integration is, but again, we still need integration, right? So how do we make sure that these bus stops in this corridor, you know, fit up, I mean, fit well with this? And it won't be perfect. The shelter, let me tell you all about the shelter. I'm so happy that you all announced this. So I don't know if you all remember Willett Street Apartments, right? So Willett Street Apartments is, you know, connected right there, and I've taken some colleagues from other counties around, and I'm all proud because HUD, on their ticker, when you go to the HUD website, is Willett Street Apartments. So I'm trying to show off. So I parked my car, like, look at this! And I got out my car, it was the dumbest thing I could have done, because all I did was get an earful about what folks did not like at the bus shelter. But guess what? Everything that I was going to, well, not everything I was going to, everything I did ask, you all seem like you fixed it. So like, I just, I feel like really good about these improvements that are coming to the bus shelter. And I feel better about going out, and I don't know if it's going to do anything about trash or anything like that, like trash cans, bathrooms, like those are some things that people asked about. I'll end in these two places. You did mention stop roadway death, the SS4 grant that opened up, that we might be applying for. It closes in September. I would love to see us get some of that funding, right? Especially since, you know, we're talking about, David Price is our Chair on Appropriations. That sunset hits in January, and what did we see four days ago? $58 million to NC DOT for the freight and rail project between Raleigh and Virginia. So they did that announcement in Wake Forest four days ago. That's $58 million. Before he sunsets in January, whatever other opportunities are open up, I would love for us to go after them, and however this board can be supportive, I'm all for it, just since you opened the door up about that grant. And I think that one is, the grant you spoke about, if I'm not mistaken, is about reducing deaths at intersections. So that's going to help us improve some things. The last thing, I think it was brought up somewhere in the comments today, but I did want to go back, because I've met with some community groups. And on its face, Ellen, especially since we've talked to you a bunch of times about this, I am on its face, and just based on the work you all done, all the projects you have, I don't have a problem with the new position or with the cost share. However, a concern has been brought up that perhaps we don't need to fund these positions, or we don't need to do the cost share, and one of the reasons was that it would slow down projects. I just want to give you all the opportunity. I don't see that, but then again, I'm also not an engineer. So if that is a concern, I mean, that's a concern the community has, so I would really love for you all to speak to that. And we'll just, yeah, speak to how folks might feel like it would slow projects down. Like, I don't see it. And if you all don't see it either, could you just elevate why additionally you all need this, and how it won't slow your projects down?
Go for it.
Thank you. So, you know, we've been talking about the need for project delivery staff for two years. We talked about submitting a request for project staff in the FY22 Transit Plan Cycle. We're told at the time that there wasn't going to be any appetite for any new funding, it was just going to be a continuation of existing funding in '22, so we didn't submit that application. We've been working very hard to keep these projects moving, but they're moving at a slower pace than they would be if we had the types of resources. The town of Cary has five and a half FTEs funded by the Wake Sales Tax. If we had that type of support, we wouldn't be talking about how these projects are, you know, finalizing the recommendations. We'd be done now. So, there's a very clear relationship between the availability of staff who can focus all of their time on advancing these projects, and the speed at which these projects advance. And so, we also, you know, had discussions last fall and winter about the importance of, you know, we're looking at 22 million for the two Fayetteville and Holloway corridors, 13 million for the Durham Station. These are large-ticket items. How, we're going to need folks to manage these, or the projects are going to slow down if we don't have those folks. And so, we talked about, why don't we, you know, I was looking at where Raleigh and Cary are. We talked about, why don't we start it out with just three positions, build a unit that's focused on transit project delivery. The funding for that was incorporated into the Transit Plan Model that was updated by in coordination with the Durham County Finance Department. All of that funding was in the model that was reviewed and updated in December, January. And so when we moved into the application process, the direction from the team was, don't apply for anything that's not in the model. Don't apply for things that are above and beyond. So we limited our request to the three positions that we had submitted that were fully funded in the model. The model is financially constrained, so there is available funding in it. We did not request funding through the city's budget process for these positions. We submitted them as reimbursable, consistent with how things are done on the Wake County side, and how things are done for other parties to the Transit Plan. And it wasn't until very late in the process, in April, when the city manager was finalizing her budget, that we learned that there would be this 50% match requirement. So that's not in the budget that the city manager proposed to council. Because our understanding was that these three positions would be able to move forward, they were fully funded in the model, they had been requested. And so, we're now in a very difficult situation of trying to determine, how do we move forward projects of this magnitude? 22 million for the Transit Emphasis Corridors, 13 million for the Durham Station. When we don't have funding through the Transit Plan, as was anticipated and as was incorporated into the model, there's not funding in the city manager's budget that's, you know, due to be voted on by the city council on the 21st of this month. So, it's really, it's very challenging to see how all of this work gets done without additional capacity. And it's most likely that projects will be slowed until we can reach a full resolution on this.
Thank you. And I know I said that was my last one. I'm just going to ask really quick. I don't know if this is a question for the chair or the manager, but I know that that's a funded request, I know that we're in a work session, but the $2.7 million match, is that something that we're just going to come back and do at a later date, because that was in there too? I was just making sure, like, that's another day?
I think.
We've got a lot, we've got a lot more questions to ask before we.
That was my last question.
Before we go there. Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner.
Could I clarify a few things? So, like, as Sean noted, when we updated our financial model for the plan, we did try to incorporate future staff requests into that model. That was presented to all the boards in March, and at those meetings, those updates, there was, there were concerns expressed about the funding request. You know, that was expressed both at the Board of Commissioners meeting, the MPO Board, and I mentioned it in my update to City Council in March. And then the other thing I just want to note is that, you know, like I said, the Go Triangle receives the bulk of our funding for staff support. That's something that we've been doing for years, since the beginning. And as noted, the Go Triangle staff are working on both City of Durham and Go Triangle projects. So they are working on behalf of the city, on behalf of the priorities that we've set in the plan. Go Durham and Go Triangle have a unique relationship with this contract that they have for Transit Plan management. And that includes Go Triangle working on their behalf on project implementation. So they're working, they're doing those bus stop improvements for Go Durham. They also did like the initial planning phase for the Durham Station improvements. So there is some benefit to the City of Durham in this number here of 6.4 FTEs for the City of Durham. Also, like, the city, you fund Go Triangle staff to do this work for you too. So there is also a precedent for the city funding staff working on Durham Transit Plan projects. The match is more consistent with that previous precedent that we have here in the Transit You know, also, we definitely need more staff. Like, I'm in favor of that. I've said that multiple times during updates. Like, I'm in favor of more staff. You know, the issue is really, who pays for it? And how do we pay for it? What's fair? What demonstrates, you know, our commitment to improving transit in the county, and the city's commitment to improving transit? And I think we have a lot of overlap in our priorities. The match helps set that up as this is a Team Durham effort to improve transit. So that's the rationale behind the, you know, staffing request. Obviously, also, we can do more with more money. And how do we get more money? Who has the ability to contribute here? The city does have the ability to contribute. So we will be able to accomplish more if we can work together, in terms of putting our funding sources together.
And that's part of your governance study that you are conducting right now, is it not?
To a certain extent, yeah. A policy like this, if we were to require a match, I do think it needs to be in an adopted policy that all three Transit Plan governing boards approve. You know, it's a, it would set a precedent, it'd be something that we would want agreement on. So, part of the governance study is to develop policies like that.
Commissioner Jacobs, could I have?
Thank you. And I'm, thank you, Sean, for being here and for the presentation. I'm really glad that we're beginning to actually have this conversation, because I think this is actually just the first step. There are a lot of questions, and still a lot more information we need, but this is a really good first step. As Ellen mentioned, there are, I believe, and I agree with her, that there are some basic policies that we need to establish about financial policies, and also policies about administration, and also about our, what are our policies about? What is our priorities related to? What is a transit improvement? I do want to also mention, in making the comparisons with Wake County, they have three times as much transit revenues that we have. Wake County, Raleigh runs their own bus system. They have advanced five BRT projects, and with their staff. And, you know, so I don't want to get into comparing apples and oranges, because I think it is apples and oranges. You know, the big issue is, we have limited transit dollars. We only generate about 30, 32 million dollars a year. And so it really gets down to what is the best use of the limit of Durham County transit revenues that we have. I think that's what the issue is really about. You know, I appreciate all of the emphasis being put into sidewalks, and how we get people to the bus stops. That is really, really critical. But, you know, sidewalk repairs, sidewalk improvements, amenities, those are basic city functions. And if you look at the survey results, that, you know, came out of very robust engagement, which I commend you all on, the number one priority was more routes going more places. Number two, faster, more reliable service. Number three, frequent service, 15-minute service. Number four, more transit access to jobs for people within a 45-minute trip. Number five was more sidewalk access to bus stops. And, you know, so, you know, again, when we have to decide about what is the best use of Durham County transit revenues, then, you know, our focus, I believe, needs to be on related to the actually improving the transit revenues. So I think we are going to need, and again, we can't answer this, and I said that, why this is the first step, because with the Transit Emphasis corridors that are supposed to be, I guess, get 26 million dollars, we still don't have a lot of information about how are those going to get the buses moving quicker and everything else. Some of the things you mentioned don't cost any money. And, you know, so, things like, you know, loading and unloading, changing routes, even traffic signal changes, those are, those don't cost money. I'm, you know, I'm glad you've mentioned the downtown Durham Transit Emphasis Zone. I would like more information about what are the plans to advance that? Because for me, starting to work on BRT to address that issue, and I'm really glad the Durham Transit Station is going to accommodate BRT buses, that is what we need to start working on. And that's for me, a priority in the Durham County Transit Plan. I support what Ellen is recommending, which is cost share. Cost share for sidewalks, cost share for administration. We just don't have enough money. And again, it's about making choices. So, and it also makes everybody have skin in the game. I would say to you all, we are funding, out of our Durham County local budget, two new transit positions. The city has not finalized their budget yet. You know, the city can help with the cost share for those positions. And, so, I mean, lost my train of thought a minute. Anyway, I just want to get us focused on some of these bigger issues that we need to focus on for the long term. The budget that you showed us at the end, could you go back to that? I guess, looking at that, I don't understand, okay, so here we see, and between '20 and '21, we doubled in terms of the Transit Plan revenues, but, you know, there's not much increase in the local funding there. And then when you look at the next slide, and I'm looking at, again, local funding really does not increase very much over time. And I just don't think that's a sustainable model to tackle all of the sidewalk needs that the city has, and all of the transportation needs. I think we really need to talk about how are we going to raise more revenues for local transportation needs? Because the transit tax was, we sold that to the residents in our community, that that is for major regional transportation projects. And even if we don't do commuter rail, then we're going to need to look at BRT, because we're going to have to get Durham residents to the jobs that they are now going to in Wake County and RTP in a better way, and then that's where the jobs are going to be in the future. And also going towards Orange County and Chapel Hill. So, we can't relinquish our commitment to the regional projects. So anyway, I, you know, I sent in some questions, and I do have a lot of more detailed questions about, you know, how money is being spent. And I just, I look forward to, we really need to work together on this, and come up with some policies that will help make sure that everybody knows, you know, what the bottom line is. Thank you.
So, I'll go over here, and then I'll end with my questions, okay?
Thank you, Chair, and thank you so much, Sean, and Ellen, for this presentation. I really appreciate it. I really appreciate, Ellen, you mentioning that, you know, you're supportive of the new additional positions. I think, you know, for myself, after listening to this presentation and having conversations with city council members, I think it'll be really important for us to be supportive of these positions, because we say, you know, we have so many areas that have continued to be left behind and forgotten about in so many projects, and that's only going to be addressed if we actually start having the manpower to get to that work, especially when we're also looking at what's the plan for commuter rail or bus rapid transit. So being able to have the staffing to do that. I had two questions that you can provide at a later time, but I think it would be beneficial for us as commissioners, like, when we're out in community, oftentimes people will come up and ask us, like, what's happening with the sidewalk repairs? What's happening with, there's so many bus stops that are uncovered? If you could just provide us with information on, has the city done like a robust accounting of how many sidewalks near? of how many sidewalks near bus stops need repair? And what the total cost would be that is lingering right now? That's pending for those repairs, as well as how many of our bus stops are still uncovered? And what the total cost of providing shelter for all of those stops would be? So that way, we're better informed when we're talking to community members. Thank you.
Carter? Yes, thank you. Excellent presentation, great information, and really good work. I mean, you guys in the City Transportation Department have excellent plans for improving our bus service. And as you say, it's for two-thirds of riders who have no car. They have no other means of getting around. And so we also know your engagement efforts have been model efforts in that you have reached the people who are using the service, and we really appreciate that. We appreciate so much about your work. And as my colleagues have said, there's so much to do, and we want to do it all, both regional improvements and these local improvements. We want our bus system to be outstanding. We want it to be stellar, and we want it to connect to also a stellar spine that connects regionally to jobs and opportunities and housing. And so I feel like we've asked for help figuring out, how can we stretch our transit dollars? How can we do it all? And Ellen has come back with, you know, some sort of a way of bringing forward some additional revenue. And, you know, one of those was this idea of the cost share for the positions that the city's requesting, and also a cost share for the work being proposed in sidewalk improvements, which I don't think anyone here is against. We all want to do it, so how to fund it? So I really appreciate Ellen coming forward with that as a way of bringing forward additional revenue because we haven't figured out how to do that otherwise. And I guess I would just ask, is the city open to that? I mean, are you able to answer that, Sean? You may not be. Okay. Well, we got to figure that out, and hopefully, we can collaborate on this and move forward with these great plans for both local and regional transit. One question I have is related to the city tax dollars that are dedicated to transit. I think you said three point seven five cents. And so the increase in funding for transit, is that from natural growth in property tax revenue, or is it from increasing percentages of property tax devoted to transit?
So I shared with Ellen earlier this year of the history of both the revenues generated by property tax as well as the rate. The rate has fluctuated because of reevaluations of real property. So in some cases, when the revale drives up the value of real property, the rate is adjusted down.
That makes sense.
So you see a fair amount of variability in the number of cents over the last ten years. But what is consistent is growth, in that we are now more than double, going into FY23, the dollars that were generated by the property tax when, you know, the referendum was passed in 2011. So there's really a very clear trajectory of growth, but there is some variability because of the real property valuation changes.
Would it be a relevant question to ask, what about percentage of your property tax revenue going towards transit?
We could certainly share that.
Okay. It may or may not be super relevant. I'm interested in it.
And if I can ask a clarifying question. So are you saying, Sean, there is not a dedicated cent dedicated to the transit out of the sales tax?
So the sales tax is managed by Durham County, Go Triangle, and the MPO. And so that is, in that transit plan revenue, that's primarily money flowing from the sales tax, the half-cent sales tax that's issued across Durham County. So the city levies a property tax that is dedicated to transit. Right now, it's at three point seven five cents, and it generates more than fourteen million dollars, that three point seven five cents. So it has, over the last...
Is that a year?
Yes. So over the last ten years, because of changes in the value of real property, the rate of the property tax that is dedicated to transit has fluctuated, but the yield has consistently increased.
And is it, does it fluctuate proportionately to the reduction of the property tax rate?
Yes. So as the value of real property goes up, a lower rate generates the same or more revenue.
And then the only other thing I wanted to say was kind of in response to Eric Landfried's remarks earlier about how residents don't care who pays for it, they just want these improvements. And I hear that. We, and I understand that, and I believe that to be true. And I, as a commissioner, feel vexed continually about the fact that we have this sort of separation of city and county government and sort of the authorities that go along with both, that go along with that separation. You know, residents don't care who pays for more teachers in their schools either, but it is going to be the county who pays for those. So I don't know. It's just sort of a frustrating position to find ourselves in, that we know these improvements need to happen, but I do think we're going to have to figure out how we're going to share the cost of some aspects of this anyway in order to do it all.
If I may, you know, we've talked a lot about the revenue side of the ledger, but there's also an expenditure side to the ledger. We're looking at twenty, thirty-five million dollars worth of projects. If you just take the transit emphasis corridors, that's, say, twenty-five million worth of projects. We're seeing very significant construction cost escalation in all of our bids and contracts right now. So if you have twenty-five million dollars and you're at four percent, which is about, I think, what the model assumes, and you lose a year, that's a million dollars in additional expense. So by slowing the delivery of these projects, by, you know, working through some of these issues around staffing, there's a real risk that we are going to suffer significant construction cost escalation for these high-dollar projects in the years to come. And we're also losing out on the value of the benefit of delivering more projects more quickly in our community. So there really is a balance to be struck.
So a lot of thoughts, a lot of thoughts. You know, when you serve on the Go Triangle board and on this board, it's a lot of information. One of the questions that I will ask is around the car rental tax. What would be the amount of dollars we would lose without that? Do you know, Ellen?
Did you say the rental car tax? Yeah. So right now, back, well, since 2013, since our original plan, or, why does, the, half of the vehicle rental tax has been dedicated to the county transit plans. So Durham, Wake, Orange. It's a little less than a million dollars for Durham, and so over the twenty years of our plan, it would be about a twenty-five million dollar decrease from our budget, from what we had been developing and, you know, had worked on the financial modeling with Go Triangle on last fall and over the winter to kind of confirm all of those assumptions. We would have to cut twenty-five million additional.
Okay. That helps me with that. That's a concern. That's a conversation that we've just kind of been thrown at, has been kind of thrown at us without discussion. And just wanting to know, what does that look like? You know, there are a lot of questions, and one of the things that the mayor and I had a conversation with Go Triangle was around the buses because we really want, we're committed to having great bus services in Durham and getting our buses fixed. We don't know what that's going to cost. And when I say "we," the mayor and I are working closely together to find out how this will happen. And I don't know the answer to that. But what I do know is that I support Ellen and the governor's study and what she's proposed. I do believe that there is a way to get this done. I mean, when we talk, when you talk about FTEs, I don't have, I have no idea how that structure works, whether you're talking about FTEs that are paid by the city or paid by Go Triangle. So is it all paid by Go Triangle? Is it paid by, I don't know which one of those pots the money comes out of. And, you know, we don't have to talk about it now, but those are questions that I don't, I'm not clear of how that works. And, you know, I was out there on the tour as well, and I saw the liability out there. So I know that we have got to get these buses handled. And there's a lot of conversation about whether Durham pays or the city. That's not the issue. The issue is, how do we, how did we get this far down the freaking track and no policies in place? I don't, I'm having this conversation with Go Triangle. I don't understand that. How do you work? And how do you work like this with no policies in place to know what is supposed to happen? No matter, who sits in these seats? There should be a policy so that everybody knows what's supposed to happen, and I can't find it. So we need to take care of it. It needs to happen so that people understand what their responsibilities are, no matter whether it's the city or the county or Go Triangle. Because right now, we, it turns out to be whoever has the most votes or whoever has the biggest stick is which way we go. That's not policy. So there are some other things, but I'm not going to prolong this conversation. One of the things I do want to ask is what's happening with Merck. I know that the last conversation we had with them, that they were interested in pursuing, working with the city and the county. Where are they in that conversation?
So we did have a very productive meeting with Merck on May 24th. So they're working through their internal process on how to move forward with dissemination of information about the Van Poole and then kind of using their internal resources. But we think we're on a very good path with Merck as well as with AW. Some of the firms, you see in the last bullet here, we've had more challenges getting responses from them. But with Corning, Merck, and AW, we've gotten very encouraging responses.
Okay, good. I look forward to hearing more about that.
And I just want to note that it's about more than just the Van Poole program. Like, we need to be working with them on promoting the Go Durham Connect that'll be launching so that there's better awareness of that and how it could be used for commuting. There may be other options that we could consider, like a shuttle or something like that. We need to explore that further if that's a viable option. And, you know, just general publicity, you know, and having a website or a brochure or something that can be used in employee recruitment as well.
Okay. One other question to answer for me. It's my understanding that there, around the money situation, I've thought about it, that there is money to fund, that you already have money in the pocket. Is that, I'm not sure how to describe what I'm talking about, but you're shaking your head. You know what I'm talking about? The gentleman back here.
For the...
Okay. Do you know what I'm alluding to?
For the financial model or for what project?
In our budget for Go Triangle, conversation about that the funds are already there for you to move forward.
You're talking about the bus stops, the better bus stop project?
Yeah.
The transit emphasis corridors? Yeah. Okay. So those are big projects, like, as mentioned, you know, they're twelve to thirteen million each, I believe, is what the projection is at this point. Funding has been approved in past years for planning and design. Not all of that money has been spent, so there's a balance there. So the projects...
That might be what they were talking about.
Do have funding to move...
Had a little piece of it, so I'll have to check, go back and check my email and see if that's what they were talking about.
Yeah.
But I do believe that there's a way to move forward with this, and I think it's up to us to figure that out. And as far as staffing, that was one other question. And when there are positions that are not filled, I'd like to understand why they're not being filled and being asked for more.
So the three positions that the city is requesting would be all new positions. Right now, there are no city positions funded by the Durham County Transit Plan. So there are no vacant positions because there are no positions. There is, there has been some conversation with Go Triangle that they have had some challenges filling vacant positions that are budgeted, that six point four that we showed earlier. Some of those positions are vacant, I understand. And so that has been a challenge for Go Triangle to keep all of those FTE positions filled. But with respect to the city, we don't have any positions that are funded by the work program, and so...
You don't have one position that's unfilled?
We have positions that are, we have ninety-two positions in the Transportation Department. So we have some that are vacant right now. And, but the positions, the key positions that work on our transit plan projects are filled right now. And so we're very excited to move forward with delivery of these projects, but really want to be able to grow that project delivery capacity by adding those three positions.
That make any sense? That didn't make any sense. You say you have positions that are unfilled, but you need, these positions are different.
We have positions in the technicians who manage traffic control signage, all the signs that you see around the city. We have vacancies there. Folks who manage the traffic signals, we have vacant positions there. But we need to fill those positions with people who will be focused on the signs and traffic signals. That's the core of that work, and those positions are needed to maintain our traffic signs and traffic signals. So these positions would not be involved in traffic signals or parking management. They would be focused entirely on delivering projects like the Holloway Corridor, like the Fayetteville Corridor, like Durham Station, that are funded through the Durham County Transit Plan.
Okay. As Commissioner Jacobs said, this is a start with the conversation. I don't have anything else right now. Rest of the board, if any, or other... Commissioner Jacobs?
So I know that there's a lot of, I think, confusion, especially with the public, when we talk about the Durham County Transit Plan. There isn't really a Durham County Transit Plan. There is a plan, and we probably need to change the name of it. There's a plan of how we're going to use the Durham County Transit revenues. I mean, the plans that we follow are like the MPO plan, you know, we have our twenty, fifty different plans there. But in terms of planning, it's a plan for how to use these specific revenues. So is there a Durham city transportation plan? So, is there a Durham City Transportation Plan?
So, we have a number of transportation plans. So, in 2017, for example, we did our Bike and Walk Plan that was focused on bicycle and pedestrian needs. In 2019, we did a short-range transit plan for Go Durham. In 2020, we did the Move Durham Plan that was led by our star transportation planning manager, Ellen Beckman, at the time. And if you haven't read the Move Durham Plan, it's amazing. It really, it's focused on central Durham, but it really is a great vision for the types of projects that we want to be able to implement. And what we're proposing here for Fayetteville and Holloway fits perfectly with the recommendations, with many of the recommendations coming out of the Move Durham Plan. So, I think that there is confusion when we say Durham County-
Yeah.
-Transit Plan. We have this 20-year financial plan.
Yeah.
And then, we have our annual work program. So, Ellen's very capable, maybe she can come up with a better name. But I think there's some work to do on this confusion about, we're allocating the sales tax essentially, the half-cent sales tax for transit, we're allocating that for the next 20 years. And that's what the update that we've been working on since 2019 does, but that there's, there's more work to do. And then, you know, there are other initiatives that are waiting for the adoption of that plan. So, there's a Durham Bus Plan that's funded in the work program. But we're waiting for the final 20-year financial plan to be approved, to see what investments are included, at what levels, and then, once that 20-year financial plan is included, that will kick off a short-range bus plan to look at near-term improvements to both Go Durham and Go Triangle services. So, right now, making sure that we advance the 20-year financial plan to approval, that sets the table then for more detailed, short-range bus planning efforts going forward.
Okay. So, when we, when, when, when Go Triangle is asked to take care of the bus situation, you're saying that that conversation need to go to Go Durham versus Go Triangle? Is that, you see the confusion here?
It's very confusing.
You know, it's like, it's this relationship that you don't know which direction the question needs to go. Does it go to Go Triangle folks, or does it go to Durham folks? Where does the question land?
So, it often comes down to who the project sponsor for the initiative is. So, the city is the project sponsor for the Holloway Corridor, the Fayetteville Corridor, and Durham Station. So, the city's working to advance and deliver those three projects. Go Triangle is the project sponsor for the bus stop improvement program. Go Triangle is the project sponsor for the access paratransit maintenance facility that is one of the material changes to the plan this year. Go Triangle is responsible for planning the Regional Transit Center relocation project. So, I think there's some work to do in increasing the visibility of who does what. But that really, that information is available in the project sponsor designation for each project, but we could do a better job of communicating that to avoid some of this confusion, which is substantial.
Thank you.
If I could just add to that, to your question, Wendy, there are a lot of plans that the city has, great plans done by great people, that address a wide variety of transportation needs in Durham. And I just want to emphasize that the Durham County Transit Plan, as mentioned, is how we, how we use that half-cent sales tax, and that state law says that that half-cent sales tax needs to be used for the benefit of public transit riders. So, you know, sidewalks are great. I'm a big supporter of sidewalks. I do think it's important to recognize that they serve everyone, like, they're consistently at the top of the resident survey for priority for improvements. And that's not just transit riders. You know, everyone in Durham would like to have more sidewalks, you know? In my career, working here, that's a consistent theme in all neighborhoods, is that everyone would like to have more sidewalks. And I, I believe in that 2017 Bike Walk Plan, there were 400 miles of sidewalks needed in Durham. You know, there's a huge need, and sidewalks can be very expensive. You know, the old Durham Chapel Hill Road project was just built, I think that was like $13 million, right? Like, that's, that's a road rebuild. It's very nice, curb and gutter, accessible sidewalks, bike lanes, all that. But it can add up. Like, this is a big expense. So, so in the, you know, cost share proposal and what is being discussed and talked about is, how do we ensure that the transit plan dollars is going towards the, the benefit of transit riders, and that there are some guidelines around what is the responsibility of the transit plan and what's the responsibility of the city? Because it could really get mixed up, and there's no clear line of, of what is a transit benefit and what is like a general public benefit. And it, and, you know, sidewalks sound easy, but they're not. They, they can be very expensive. Anything else for commissioners?
You have, okay.
Just to conclude, you know, we're very focused on the delivery of service and infrastructure improvements for Go Durham riders. At the end of December last year, the cash on hand for the tax district from the sales tax was $87 million. $87 million cash on hand. The FY23 Work Program that's going to the Go Triangle Board later this year adds $13 million to that fund balance. That's $100 million. We're very focused on putting that money to work. We are seeing-
Is it the Go Triangle budget? Is that what you're saying?
It is the fund balance for the sales tax, the half-cent sales tax and related revenue sources, but primarily the half-cent sales tax. $100 million. We're seeing cost escalation. The model has it at 4%. We're seeing it 8, 9, 10% in our bid documents. And we have improvements that are urgently needed in our community, and our community members have told us they want to see more improvements more quickly. And we have $100 million in fund balance that could be utilized to expedite the delivery of these improvements, save on the cost, the escalation cost of these projects, and provide benefits to our riders and our community more quickly. So, thank you.
I haven't, I haven't seen that, Sean, so I will check into that, but that number that you're quoting on the, on the Triangle Board, I have not seen those numbers. So, I-
I'm happy to share them as a follow-up.
I'll happily ask the CEO, the CEO that give it to me.
I just want to quickly respond. The reason why there is that money, it's because it's being saved for a major transportation project that is in our adopted plan. I, I think it's really misleading to make a statement like that and not give the context of why that money is sitting there. It is for the commuter rail project. And if we don't do the commuter rail project, then we will look at something else. And again, that's what the sales tax revenues were levied and approved by the residents in our community. So, I really, I really want, I have to respond to that. And, you know, again, I, I really, I know we have city folks here. I think that it, I, I hope that the city will look at something like a bond for sidewalks, because it is a huge need in our community, and we cannot just look at the transit revenues to build sidewalks. So, anyway, thank you.
Thank you, Sean, for your report. Thank you so much for the conversation, and you too, Ellen. Commissioners, it is almost one, it's after 1:00, so we can take our lunch break, and we could have a closed session at the same time.